We have in front of us approximately, well, last year we had in front of us about 635, 640,000 dollars worth of requests. This year, we have a little over a million dollars in requests. We started, we said three years ago to begin to expect a reduction in agency contributions because of an ever tightening budget situation. That was before the state of Kentucky began to address the pension crisis. Please understand that this pension crisis, while it's being talked about in Frankfurt, it's going to come to Danville, Kentucky and every other community and county to roost. For the city of Danville, over the next three years, our funding mandate to the state for the pension is going to push us to the million dollar addition mark. We don't have an answer to that problem. That is what we're facing. I share that with the public because the public needs to know and needs to understand that there's going to be a real difficult effect here. So what can the public do? Talk to your legislator. This problem is in Frankfurt. It's not at the county courthouse, it's not at City Hall. This issue's in Frankfurt. And they have the luxury of being able to say or do whatever they want to say or do and leave us with the problem to solve. So that's the public's opportunity to help avert this issue for us. This commission is well aware of the process of how we do this at this point. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Scott with details and administrative issues.
Morning, Mike, Mayor and Commissioners. Perhaps just a footnote on your comments about the pension crisis. You know, in 2013, I think it was, legislation was passed which reformed our local pensions. And we don't have defined benefit programs for our employees going forward. It's those that were hired prior to 2013. The problem is not that the city and county have not funded their share of pensions all along. We did that and we're still doing that. The challenge is that the administrative decision in Frankfurt is to increase those rather substantially in a four-year cycle where it's up 12% every year over the prior year. So we will get to that million dollar mark additionally pretty quick. We're already paying a million dollars more or in total pension contributions every year now. CRS is the best funded system that the state has at about 62% of actuarially funded and it's becoming, due to the accelerated rate of contributions, even better funded. So you know, I guess our plea to the public and to our legislature is to ease off on the additional contributions that they're requiring, but it is crimping our style a bit in terms of what we can do locally. And that's without question. So we'll deal with it. We have to, and it's a requirement of state law. So I would encourage everyone who has an interest in the pension systems though. The retirement system just recently released a booklet showing the funding adequacy of all their programs, and that's available to the public if you really have an interest to get that. It's pretty interesting to read. This morning, we're at the point of hearing from those who've requested funding from the city, both the community agencies and our city-county agencies. We appreciate you being here. We have maybe 15 to 25 minutes depending on the complexity of your organization and requests you're making to make your presentation. I'll be brief. I would just mention to the Commissioners that as in years past, we have a sheet showing last year, present year requests, and then the blank to the right. And if you have thoughts about what you would favor in the way of allocation, even in this somewhat tight budget year that we're going into, please note that and share it with me at the end of the meeting. Or alternatively, if you want to muddle it over a little bit more and just come in and see me and have a conversation, please do that. And so with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, to call our scheduled presenters.
And our first scheduled presenter is The Shepherd's House, and I think we have Mr. Roger Fox with us.
Thank you all for having us. Mayor, City Manager Scott, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Roger Fox, and I'm the Program Director of The Shepherd's House here in Danville. This is Jared Thomas. He's the President and CEO of The Shepherd's House. We are a nonprofit program that's been operating in Lexington, Kentucky since 1989. So this is our 30th year of operation there. We developed a program there that takes men and reintegrates them into society by doing a couple of things very well. They provide stable housing, they provide job skills training and employment, and mental health services that are so needed. And you know, personally, I know how beneficial those services were in my life. They allowed me to gain some sobriety. They allowed me to go to work for the first time. They allowed me to receive the mental health treatment that I desperately needed. And when we came to Boyle County and when we came to Danville, we really wanted to transfer those three things into our program here. And those are the three things that we've really focused on over the last two years. We started in February of 2017, and the program developed out of an idea of jailer Barry Harmon and Jared. They were wondering why the jail was so overcrowded. And Jared started looking at who was in jail and why they were in jail. And we realized that most of the people were in there because they have a substance abuse issue that was going untreated. There were really no options here. So we started this program that allows men and women to, instead of serving their time inside of the detention center, come to our program. And like I said, those three things, they were so important. How to gain sobriety, how to become a good employee and receive the mental health treatment that you need. And those are the things that we focus on. Over the last two years, we've seen some amazing things. We've had 165 clients admitted into our program. One-third of those clients have come directly from the city of Danville. They live here, they work here, you know. And we've really, it's been amazing to see the support from the community. And you know, like I talked about the employment, we went out and met with employers and we said, hey, here's the benefits of hiring a Shepherd's House client. We've seen a lot of success over the last two years. We've graduated 52 of the 165 that came into our program. That means they stayed with us for about 207 days. The amazing thing about these men and women that are coming to our program and graduating is that 75% of them are not going back to the detention center. They're not being rearrested by city police. They are leaving our program and they're employed in jobs that are primarily in the city of Danville, you know, adding tax dollars to the community. And such a benefit to not just the city, but really to that person. I know what it feels like to just get that first check, you know, and to be able to spend it wisely and have the tools available to me to be able to manage my money the right way. And that's what we've done over the last two years. Recently, we've opened our program up to the public. What had happened is people found out about The Shepherd's House and they started showing up at our front door. And they're saying, can you please help me? Can you please help me get into treatment? Can you please, how can I get into your program? And you know, for the longest time, I had to say, you have to come from the detention center. You know, that was the only way to get in. Well, we've developed a way to allow men and women to show up and allow us to treat them right there. And to be able to put them through our employment program, to put them through our adult education program, to give them support. We have peer support specialists who kind of walk them through the process of recovery, get them hooked up with 12-step meetings and teach them about what, you know, how they gain their own personal sobriety, you know. We offer mental health treatment for the man or woman that shows up. We offer, you know, group and group therapy, individual therapy, drug and alcohol education. We get involved in the community. We love being in the community. We take, we go and work at Constitution Square. We do a lot of, you know, good community service projects because we just love to be a part of the community. So the money that we ask for from you all is to allow us to continue to serve men and women from the city of Danville. We asked for $20,000 and we allocated 12,000 of that to be scholarships, to be able to serve people who may not have insurance, or to offer our services, the employment program, the adult education, all of these things, the mental health services that we may not be able to do without this money. We asked for $3,000 in supplies. We provide a lot of material for people coming in and out. Even if they just show up and they don't join our program, we provide whatever services that we can for that person. And we also asked for $5,000 to do an intervention and prevention program in the local schools. And Jared Thomas is, he has an amazing story about his personal recovery, and it really speaks to kids, I feel like. It would be such a benefit, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about that. But before he does, I want to tell you about a guy named Daniel that came into our program. He's my, he's the favorite story to tell of something that's happened in the last two years. Daniel lived here, and I've known Daniel for a long time. We ran around and we drank together, and he knew me, you know. And when he came to our program and he seen me, he said, Roger, what happened to you? He said, you know, he said, I feel like my life's falling apart. He said, how can I get what you got? And I said, you know, Daniel, I'll do my best. Daniel had a district court case going on, and he had a family court case going on as well. They had removed his kids from his home and given Daniel and his wife plenty of opportunities to work to get his children back, and he had failed. He had failed a lot. And I would go and talk to the county attorney, and she would say, listen, Daniel is not going to get his kids back. You need to prepare him for that. So I had Daniel in my program for six months, and he stayed sober. His mother died while he was in our program, and he stayed sober through that. He was showing me something that he really wanted. He was following the suggestions that I was giving him. You know, he was really opening up in group, and he did the employment program, and he got a job for, he got a job at Center College working in the kitchen there. And he really liked that, and he got an apartment. And he was really putting the effort in. And I would go down to the county attorney's office, and they would say, he's not going to get his kids back. And Daniel graduated our program, and he had an adjudication hearing set for January. It was on a Friday. And he said, Roger, I want you to go to court with me, no matter what. I just want you to be there for support. And I said, absolutely, I'll go with you. And I knew in my heart, I just didn't know if I would be able to handle it. I'm going to see this guy lose his kids, and I hope that he can, that he can maintain his sobriety. And like I said, Daniel stayed sober. He graduated all the way up to that adjudication hearing. He called me on a Thursday, the day before, and he said, Roger, he said, they canceled my, they canceled my court day. They pushed it back. And I said, why? And he said, they're going to give me my kids back in April. Daniel stayed sober. He got a job. He got, he got a place to live, stable housing for him and his wife. He did the next right thing. And he was in my office in August, and he had his kids with him, and he had just enrolled them in school here in Danville. And man, I'm telling you, that's why The Shepherd's House does what it does. You know, that's why we do the work that we do, to see families being reunited and to see happy kids. And to be able to do that is an amazing experience, and we appreciate everything that you all do for us. And I'm going to let Jared tell you about the intervention and prevention program. Thank you.
We got a lot of stories like that, and that's what we do. The Shepherd's House has a break-even business model. My goal each year is not to lose money. I know I'm not going to make any, but depending on how much I lose determines what my next move is. The $20,000 that we are asking for, the 12,000 of it send three guys, guys and girls, to treatment from the city of Danville. They'll be scholarshiped. That means they get to come in and get all our services for free. Now, on the front end, it's 12,000. If I can turn them into tax-paying citizens, you'll get your money back. But you know, so that's the goal. So that's why we're asking for the scholarship, because that's the most important part is getting our hands on somebody. The second part, the $3,000 actually comes from curriculum. What happens in the drug game is when things change, the drug changes. And what we're seeing now is speed's making a heavy comeback. So you're seeing meth and cocaine pop back up. It's been heroin and painkillers for a while now. But now meth has popped back up because we're on this opioid, stop it, stop it, stop it. We're fighting, we're fighting. So the police are doing it, the governments are doing it, the jails are doing it, the treatment centers are doing it. So the people are like, eh, man, you messed with that heroin. The consequences are getting great. Let's just start cooking meth. So now meth and cocaine are making a comeback. So our curriculum, we have right now the best opioid curriculum that the state of Kentucky has to offer. What we don't have is one for meth and cocaine. So that will be the $3,000 to buy the materials and train the staff on how to deliver the curriculum. The $5,000, and where we have all fell short as a society, and one thing that we made a resolution this year to focus on are the kids before they become addicted, because we're showing up late to the game to fight. I started doing intervention and prevention programs here in Danville. I actually don't know if any of you over there, but I had done a story that was filmed and parts of it were shown on TV over at Danville High School. That's the first time I ever started that program. We've designed a five-day program where we come into your school and we take over your health class. We spend time on education. We have guest speakers. We have, if you've guys ever seen it, but it ends with truth or consequences. And we literally take you through the process, what it's like to get arrested for DUI, what it's like when they find marijuana in your locker, what it's like when you become addicted. And we literally play it out. So there's a judge in there, there's an arresting officer, there's a jail. So we take you through every step when you get pulled over on the side of the road. This intervention-prevention program is to get out in front of this thing so that my door won't keep swinging open down there. We can't keep up. But the one thing that's been amazing with this area and the city, Center College, Boyle County, I've never had any, this community is an outside-the-box thinking community like I've never been in. So whenever we're going to try something, we try it here first. And if it doesn't work, we get rid of it, and if it works, we add to it. So this thing down the street that we started, it's working, and we want to add to it. So that's kind of what the breakdown of the money looks like. And as always, I appreciate being here with you guys, and I appreciate everything you do.
Let me ask, let's go to Q and A, if we may, if there are any questions.
Of the people you serve, how many would you say are from the city of Danville? I looked, it's probably in there, I just missed it, but...
It's one-third of 165. So it was roughly around, what did I say, 40? We had about 40 or 45 residents in the city of Danville. And I will say this, over the last two years, like I said, we've become the place to come whenever you need help. So we have moms and dads showing up, and wives and husbands saying, can you help, you know, my significant other get into treatment? And we're able to do that as well.
I think it's great that you don't have to get arrested now to get some help. You know, that's kind of starting from behind a little bit. You know, this is a reminder about what the mayor said, that when times get tough and the money gets thin, you have to prioritize. And for me, this is one of those things that needs to be really studied and considered as a priority, I think, just because of the long reach that it has. You know, it affects workforce development and, you know, the jail population, and I'm sure it affects other crime as well. So I think it's something we should take a serious look at and do the best we can with.
I think I know the answer to the question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. You're requesting no funding from the county?
No, we get funding through the county.
Okay, I want to make that clear.
Yeah. Here's what happened with the county, just so everybody knows, all cards on the table. So to house somebody at the Boyle County Detention Center costs $31 a day. Barry was in a panic and said, can you, I said, are you wanting me to sympathize with you or you want me to help? He said, well, can you, I said, I can do both. So I went in and I pulled all the files of everybody that was in jail. At that time, they had 417 people in the county jail, and I pulled out 265 that were diagnosed substance abuse disorder. And he said, well, he wrote three bad checks. He did it 3:00 AM at Walmart. If you want to write a bad check and get away with it, do it between 9:00 to 5:00. But at 3:00 AM, it's a tough sell. Well, this guy's been in, you know, four fights out in front of the same watering hole. So I can tell you, what you're seeing is somebody that writes bad checks. What I'm seeing is somebody trying to score dope at 3:00 in the morning. So with that being said, we started, and I don't know what the jail attendance is today. I think the last number, 207 is the last number. So we started this program, they were at 417, they're at 207. Now, everybody said, well, how'd you pull 200 out? We didn't pull 200 out. We pulled them out 20 at a time, and we knew that four were going to relapse and go back, but we knew 16 would never go back. Well, I've just put a dent in your program. But what happened is, we opened a program to empty that jail, and what broke out in Danville, which I love Danville, what broke out is we ended up with a community center for drug addicts. I got the YMCA down there for drug addicts, for their moms, for their dads, and it's been amazing. It's been a god deal. I mean, that's what's happened. It took over that way.
How do we, this is a fantastic program. It does everything that you would want a program to do. How do you expand this?
We think, we think, obviously, one of our biggest needs in Danville is housing. That is, that is the biggest need. You know, employment is something that we can work on. We get out, and you have to prove yourself to employers, you know, and that's fine. We're able to do that. But what happens when you let Roger out of jail today and he has nowhere to go, because he's burned every bridge with his family? And you expect me to, I don't know where I'm going to stay tonight, and it's going to be 32 degrees. Well, I'm going to go back to where I always go. And then for a person like me who's in that situation, who has no solution to his problem, it's right back to drinking or doing drugs. And then I'm arrested, and then I'm back in the jail, or, you know, I'm committing property crimes.
And then one thing that you also got to understand, when we do the intervention-prevention in the schools, you take that and you expand it into your industry. Because one thing Danville did, and I researched Danville when I was living here and working here, when every other town started to fall, y'all threw industry everywhere. I mean, there was the railroad, I mean, I went back through it. If people were making money, I mean, we've got a parkway for the industry. Let's go in there and put in employee assistance programs out of that building so that you don't cut your hand off because you're high at work. And then if you need help, we can intercept and bring you into our program and do that for professionals and people working in industry. So that's how we expand. We go out in the community, because right now, there's one way through my front door. If we do this, there's a second way through my front door. Let's get a way through the front door with employers. And then when Roger talks about housing, I get excited about things. So I went down the street and bought a house because Roger had a guy relapse, and I said, dude, what's wrong with you? He said, Jared, my mom and dad cook meth. I was like, ugh. So I bought a house and was going to start moving people in. Well, you know, I bought it in the wrong neighborhood, and people rose up on me, and I understood why. I got a little too excited, and then I thought, well, I could push this through if I wanted to, but then I'll aggravate the neighborhood, so let's do this as a community. Let me ask for permission first, and then I'll go buy a house. So we would like to expand with housing and employee assistance programs. It's happening all over. People, there's jobs. If you can't pass a drug test, you can't go to work.
If you don't have an address, you can't give a job.
Exactly.
And it's a vicious cycle, yeah.
And they're our job.
Yes. Yeah, if you're in Danville and you're not working, that's on you.
What is your capacity? I know we had the, you had the 20 slots that were supposed to come from the jail, but at one time, they were not utilizing all of those spots.
We're at 40 right now, and we want to expand to 60, and I can do it, and Roger can do it, but I need, I need the prosecutor to do it, and I need the judge to do it. What happens with us, we do this to you as addicts is, if you've arrested me five times, you start getting mad at me. And the judge gets tired of telling me, I've sent you to treatment three times, Jared. You know, so they start to get mad. We need to put that aside. We didn't do anything to you. We did the only thing we know how to do. So with that being said, we do that through education. If you saw his little dinner he had with the arresting officer, we want our drug addicts to understand that at 3:00 in the morning, when a police officer's walking up on your car, he's scared to death. And if you're fidgeting and reaching under your seat, his gun's coming out. And now accidents happen. But we also want him to understand that you're fidgeting because you're high. So be patient, and let's start talking to one another. But if we can educate the court system, and we can educate our police officers, and we can start communicating with one another, and we can be equals and we do this together, if we can do all those things, we'll be successful. But education's the key, in the courthouse, in the police car, in the jail, at the school, at your work. Education's the key to this. We've got to be aware, and we've got to know what's going on.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, a quick one, following up on Commissioner Caudell. So one-third of your clients are Danville-Boyle. We kind of think of ourselves as a regional hub, so tell me where the other two-thirds are coming from.
Okay, so I said one-third was actually that lived inside the city of Danville. We actually, I can tell you, 128 of the 165 clients came from Boyle County. So majority of the clients come from Boyle County.
The rest are from Mercer, from the Joint Jail Committee.
Any further questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for what you do. This is, this is the kind of program that you love to hear about, because it's results-oriented.
So you're heading to Casa now, aren't you, for...
Yes, at lunchtime. See my wife there. All right, thank you.
Have a good day, guys. Next up, the one, the only, Michael "Fly Guy" Hughes. Bring it on.
Good morning.
Good morning. How's that for introductions? Is that all right?
I need a little better than, good morning.
Do a good night.
All right. Mike is passing out a couple things that we have tried and we feel like we have accomplished in the last, in these four, five years. First of all, we'd like to thank Mayor Perez, the city commissioners, city management, Ron Scott, for hearing our requests today. First, and also I'd like to thank, personally thank the Heart of Danville, which has hosted the festival for the last four years and still being a partner as we transition into the Danville-Boyle County African-American Historical Society as the main sponsor. Without the Heart of Danville and Dr. Rogers believing in the vision that I presented to her almost four, five years ago, the Solar Second Street would never have materialized. We also would like to thank the now-departed Nick Wade, who also continued as director to believe and to keep it alive. We think that the Solar Second Street Festival is very important to our community and to our citizens of our community. And that is what we have worked for hard for the last four years, is to share that dream to all our citizens. And in today's society and in our community, as a city, as a county, we come together on this date to enjoy each other and to celebrate a great history that for so many years that was covered up or just wasn't known to everyone. But to produce a festival, it takes, any festival taken of any kind, it takes finances. Our organization, the Danville-Boyle County African-American Historical Society, is ready to take on the challenge of growing this festival into something that our city will be proud of for many years. But this may be, but this may be our biggest challenge. We are here today to ask the city of Danville to help us in attaining this goal. As we move to become self-sufficient, that is what we want to do. That is what our goal is, is become financially, that every time that, every year that the festival is presented, that we don't, that we don't have to come here and ask for money that we can self-sufficiently handle the finances ourselves. We have asked for a total, I think, of $5,000. I think they share what you, what I expected to spend to this year. I'm not good like the gentleman that just left speaking, but I'm trying to...
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
All right, okay. We have, we have submitted our financial, what we think we need to put on the festival this year. A couple of things I want to, I like to say I'm not good at it, but I'm better at being myself, you know. A couple of things that I want to mention that, about the festival, that I hear kind of through the grapevine, that a lot of people believe that the festival is just about the African-American community, and it's not. It's about our community. It's about the Danville community.
That's right.
And that's what we want. We want to see everybody come down, enjoy all the things that we are trying to do. A couple of years, a couple of years ago, we added what we called the African-American History Conference. And last year was a huge success, and we overcrowded the library, actually. And what was so special, what we find is so special, that we are... actually. And what was so special, what we find is so special, that we honored the Danville Yankees, and the living, it's always been said to me, give flowers while you're living. And we honored, three of the people that was honored at the history conference have passed in this last year, and we feel like that that was special in so many ways, that we was able to honor those people. This year, we're hoping to bring in several people. We hoping to bring in Mr. Frank Walker as one of, as one of our guest speakers, and we also talked with Mr. Jack Givens, another great person, and we, he was scheduled to be on the program last year, and he didn't get the message. So he texts me back several months ago and told us that he would be glad to come in and speak. And the other thing, we are trying to involve the churches and the youth. And I say that because the youth is the people that we really want to reach out to, because in the, in the years that Second Street was there, there was a lot of black businesses. And then, when you look at Danville right now, there is hardly any black businesses in operation. And we, the Historical Society people, myself, I'm too old to start a business, but what we want to do is inspire. That's our mission, to inspire the youth and the people of Danville. We like to, I'd like to see that materialize, and the businesses that used to be there, we can't bring back, but it's not too late for someone to step out. And not only black businesses, businesses, people, we want, we about people, you know. I've always been, when I, my first, 15 years ago, I started working with the His, the His Main Street Program in Springfield, and they started their own African-American history thing. And I said then, this would be so great for Danville, to recognize the African-American community. And didn't get it done about five, five years ago, when we initiated our festival. So we are asking you guys if, we know the budget is tight, you know, but we still think this is one of the most important festivals. We'd like to, this festival is some time to be recognized all over the state, you know. And so, if you, I'm open for questions now. Anybody have a question?
Anyone got any questions?
Does, how much are y'all asking from the county?
$3,000, I think.
$2,000?
From the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, we asked for $3,000. We have some private donations too, you know. In the paper, in the interview that I did in the paper, I talked about wanting to have some of the major acts come in, like the Tams. I think me and the mayor talked about that four or five years ago. And at some time, we'd like to do that, but we're not really, you know, you know, I mean, that's not a reality at this point. So what we want to do is produce a great festival that includes everybody, all of the community. And like I said, we are reaching out to the churches to have the youth programs for, for the white churches, to the Hispanic churches, to African-American churches, and all over the county. We want, we wanted, we want this festival, in five years from now, we want to say it is still going strong, and that it is a big part of our community. Thank you.
Michael, hang on a second. Michael, I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You got a little boost here for your festival, just recently, thanks to Joni House on the Wilderness Trail.
Yes.
Becoming a national historic site, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Heart of Danville has kind of backed away because of their own budget, and CVB, I don't want to put her on the spot, but they may have a little interest in promoting this. So have you talked to them at all?
We are talking. They, we have formed the committee. We have brought in the Danville African History Society, and we also invited the CVB there. They have been there. They on board with us. Center College, some people from Center College is also working with us. So we've got like a separate committee other than the Danville Historical Society, and we are growing that. We've got some people that wasn't there last week, but we are, you know, working hard to do that, you know. So, like I said, we hope to, in a few years, just say that we don't have to come, we don't have to go down to the city commissioner because we got our own thing, so, you know. But at this time, we do need help, you know.
Mike, I was going to just say, thanks for the work that you and the committee are doing. And anytime you get in front of the microphone, you got this captive audience this morning, you may as well give out the dates of your upcoming events.
The History Conference will be on August the 9th. We had looked at changing that for some financial reason, but I believe, and we believe, that August is the best month. It will be the History, the History Conference will be August the 10th, and August the 9th, right? And the festival will take place on August the 10th, yeah. And my birthday is the next day. Some people say that you try to keep the festival there because it is your birthday time, but no, no, it just seems to be the first, the best time of the year, you know, because by the time we get too far into August, we're talking about the great football tradition that the city and the county has, and, you know, and the kids are back to school, and a lot of the folks that travel in. I would like to, would have to give you what I economic affect to the city, but we, I don't think that we have any data that can back that up at this time. But we do know that the festival is something that everybody, one of the, Ms., I can't think of, anyway, she's one of the people that come to the festival every year, and the first one we had in 2014, and after it was over with, I got a phone call from her, and she said, Michael, can we have this festival every week? You know, because that's how, I mean, that's how important to some people it is, because, and one lady that, there was, two of the people that came to the first one hadn't seen each other since high school, and, you know, over 40, some years, 50 years. And she asked me, is this lady here? And I said, yes, she's here. And I went to the microphone and called her, and they, I think even five years now, five years later, they talk on the phone every week, so, you know.
Michael, with that said, do you all do any kind of outreach, either before the festival or during the festival, that allows people such as that to reach in the pocket and put a 20 in, or 10, or a dollar?
Yeah, we are, we are setting up, that's some of the things we're trying to achieve now, is getting people to do personal donations, and we are going to do that during the festival, and on up until the festival, we're going to set up. We're doing a lot of things where there's as much, even down to food sales and other things like that, to raise money. We are not out here saying, well, we're depending on the city or anybody else to do this, because if we didn't have no money, we'd still have a festival. I guarantee you, we'd show up in the park, and we'd do something. You know, I can, when it comes to entertainment, I live it, you know, so, you know. And producing, I've done it all my life, and like I said, if we didn't have $20, we'd take it, we'd make it work. We'd have, we'd be in the park doing something, enjoying, because it is so important to us and to our, our community, you know. Is anyone else curious?
Appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the Heart of Danville.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Gurman.
You stole my thunder. I am Logan Gurman, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Board President for the Heart of Danville for the past year or so. While I don't live or work downtown, technically, I recognize the critical importance of a vibrant and vital downtown to the character and success of our community as a whole. As I walk from my office on Fourth Street to the bank, or the courthouse, or the art center, or even City Hall, I take great pleasure in seeing neighbors and friends along the way on almost every occasion. The Heart of Danville was established in 1986 as a national Main Street program to revitalize and promote Danville, Kentucky's historic downtown. In its more than 30 years, the Heart has supported over 100 major renovation projects and fostered a significant increase in downtown business. Much of the success of the Heart of the Danville is a result of the support and involvement of the community. We receive support from this body, Boyle County, the Economic Development Partnership, local businesses, and private, private citizens. The mission of the Heart of Danville is to promote economic vitality and viability in our downtown and protect the historic, historic character of our community. The Heart works collaboratively to create an award-winning, unique, and vital downtown that embraces history, promotes small business, sponsors quality events, and celebrates the arts to instill a place, a sense of place in our community. In short, we work hard to make downtown Danville a great place to live, work, shop, dine, and have fun. While the Heart doesn't wield the stick of enforcement, we do provide the carrots to encourage preservation and good design. We strive to help downtown businesses and residents maintain, improve, and preserve Danville's unique character and appearance. We help navigate regulations and secure grants for funding our partners and members. We also know that a thriving downtown sends the correct message to any person or business that is considering a move to our community. Businesses considering a relocation to our industrial park would get the wrong impression if Danville didn't have a flourishing downtown. A healthy downtown demonstrates a healthy, growing community overall. Additionally, we strive for economic development, both in downtown itself and the community at large. We seek out new residents and businesses that see Danville as an attractive and feasible place to live and do business. We also serve to pool the marketing efforts of current businesses and increase patronage for our downtown shops, small businesses, service providers, restaurants, cultural destinations, and historic locations. We use, we use events as a primary tool to bring people downtown and utilize business in public spaces. We hold festivals, and movies, and concerts, and gatherings to achieve these goals. Not every element of the Heart of Danville is quantifiable in terms of dollars and cents. Some of the work done by our staff, our board, and our volunteer, volunteers pays dividends in different ways. Some investments are for the long run. We realize the payoff and the quality of life. The Heart of Danville Main Street Program is working hard to be innovative and creative in our events and promotions, to preserve the charm and character of our downtown spaces, and to build a welcoming and collaborative community, community nucleus for all of our citizens and visitors. On behalf of our staff, board, and volunteers, thank you for the consideration of our funding request.
I'm not as formal as him, sorry. Not as professional at all. My name is Dustin DeVal, and I'm the interim executive director currently at Heart of Danville. Tomorrow will be my third week on the job. Before that, I was the office manager, starting October 2017. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city of Danville, the mayor, the city manager, and commissioners for your consideration of Heart of Danville and the 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget. And I also want to say that there are some of our supporters here, and I'd also like to thank you all for being here for that also, and our board members and stuff. We realize this opportunity is forthcoming and tremendous, but we appreciate it nonetheless. With that being said, we would also like to acknowledge the great task that the commissioners have before them. After meetings and conversations with city officials I've had in the last three weeks, trying to make my rounds and introduce myself and get people to know me, our requests may seem trivial when compared to a new fire truck, fire station, and the pension situation. We want to publicly state that those initiatives are important and crucial to the well-being of Danville and Boyle County. Heart of Danville's mission is community development. Making Danville and Boyle County a better place to live and play has the potential to bring in more revenue to the city through additional jobs and businesses being located here. After speaking with city officials, we had a community survey also last year, and discussing with our constituents, board, and committee members, we believe 1920 fiscal year has potential to be a great rebuilding year that will enhance not only our downtown district, but also the entire community. And I have a couple of goals that I'd like to share. Some of our goals are in your all's letter in the packet there, but these are some additional goals. After having conversations with some of the officials and people downtown and reevaluating our survey, these are some of the goals that they could be on that letter, or they could be addition to. Number one, partnership with EDP and the city to develop and promote a small business incentive package. Help facilitate an entrepreneur training program for community members that would love to start a business but have no idea where to begin. Help promote new and existing businesses with co-op advertising through our e-news, through the newspaper, radio, print promotions, online marketing, and shopping promotions. Small improvement facade grants, and assisting with possible historic tax credits. Volunteer recruitment programs, so volunteers feel that they are ambassadors for the Heart of Danville. Aiding in Bourbon Chase that runs directly through our Main Street. Helping to facilitate and maintain a joined consensus among downtown businesses through more routine meetings and/or networking. We'd love for all businesses to say us and we instead of I. And lastly, free quality, free, free quality, family-friendly events for Danville and Boyle County that promotes foot traffic in the downtown district, that will bring businesses to the, business to the downtown merchants, and promote our Work, Live, and Play initiative for downtown Danville. And the last thing I kind of have for you all is, in your packet, hopefully, there is this little sheet. It's our Transformation Strategy Implementation Plan. And this is kind of our work plan for the upcoming year, if given the opportunity. And if you kind of look at the top there, it kind of gives our goal, our big goal for the whole year. I know it's very hard to read, I'm sorry. And then, there's some overarching goals that are in the blue there. Those are ways that we're going to accomplish that goal. And then, if you kind of turn it to the side there, those are activities, you know, objectives that we think, if we do these things, they're going to accomplish those goals in the blue. And then, on the left there are, we've, we tried to think of all the events that we're going to do this year, maybe consider, and we put that all down the left column, and then we've put Xs on where they play into those objectives that we have there. And so, we're kind of using that as kind of our work plan, our work goal for this year, and we believe with those events and initiatives and promotions, we will accomplish the goals that we would like to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and sirs. Questions from the commission?
You talked about small business incentives, I think, is one of your goals that you're looking to. How do you, how do you see that? What's, what form would that take? Have you talked about, have you gotten that?
We haven't, we haven't got it really started on it. That was something that my predecessor, Nick, was really gung ho about, and he really wanted to get started. And that's going to be, again, a partnership with the EDP, and hopefully with the city, hopefully going to start those meetings soon and start talking about exactly what that entails, so.
That's a great idea. Didn't know how far along that was.
Comments? I have a question about, and thank you for, for your two-page informative letter. The decision to cut our request by 37,500 last fiscal year put hardship on the organization that we were not prepared for. We have said for three years, be expecting a decrease, and we're saying it loud and clear. If you were here a little after nine, you would have heard that very clearly. And so, with that said, how are you going to prepare for it? And I'm giving you that so you're not surprised.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, we already have scheduled meetings for after we find out about what we're going to get and stuff like that, and we're very much prepared to change what we need to, we're a staff of one right now. As you can tell in the budget, we would love to have a staff of two, but again, that's all dependent kind of on this and where our finances kind of fall as the year progresses.
Mike, Mr. Mayor, we have no, we have no contract to do an ice rink this year. We are drastically changing our plans for Harvest Fest this year. We are not able to sponsor the Soul of Second Street like we'd like to, and we have no plans for an art project this year. So we're, we're tightening the belt and preparing ourselves for the worst.
I know in the first year, the ice rink thing didn't work out too good. Had it come out this year?
Much better. We changed our supplier for the ice rink. We found a local supplier that charges quite a bit less. We did a better job of raising funds for it through sponsorships, and we had an increased number of skaters, I believe. We'd love to be able to do that for free, but we can't commit to that kind of financial.
We'd love to be able to do that for free, but we can't commit to that kind of financial commitment at this point without knowing what our.
So, was it a net gain, net loss?
It was a net loss.
Are you in the process or planning to hire another director?
We have a search committee formed, or forming.
Anything else?
Just a brief comment. Your matrix of your work plan going forward, many of those you have had progress on and success on currently, and that's, I think, evident of the past success. I guess moving forward, it seems a little incongruent to me that the hundred and ten is requested of the city and only fifteen thousand from the county in terms of sort of just a recognition that downtown benefits both the city and the county, and really our entire region. So, I don't know what the potential is for getting increased amounts from the county, but that just seems a little bit lopsided, just to state it boldly there.
The request, the increase is a twenty or thirty percent increase for the city. It's an infinitely large request increase for the county because they haven't been funding us to near the level the city has.
Anything else?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I move right along?
Yeah.
Next up is the Great American Brass Band Festival.
Never heard of it.
Maybe we've got a miscue.
I kept waiting for Nikki, and that's not her anymore.
Mayor, in the book it says that the brass band's at eleven thirty. It says it is eleven thirty for brass band.
Oh, it does, doesn't it? Okay.
Schedule a break, and then the airport, we'll take a break.
Well, wait a minute. We need to.
Airport board's next.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Airport board. Morning, Mr. Quill.
Good morning. I want to, since I have the podium, I just want to take an opportunity to announce, and you can find this on our website, but that on May the eleventh, we're having a Young Eagles Day where we're offering free rides for people between the ages of eight and seventeen that are paid for by the support of the local pilots in the Experimental Aviation Association Chapter out of Cynthia, Kentucky, which is kind enough to provide pilots in addition to hours to come down and fly, give these people an opportunity to fly for free. People outside that age bracket will be, there will be rides available for pay. So, but I just wanted to, and if you haven't seen it on Facebook yet, I know the CBB has been kind enough to share it, and so, since I had you guys, I just wanted to spread the word.
When is that again?
I'm sorry?
When is that again?
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
Mother's Day weekend, but it's on Saturday. Secondly, I want to thank you all in hopes of continued funding, but that, you know, our effort is to try to get as much of our funding through the FAA and the state as possible. And with those, with the FAA funding, the FAA pays ninety percent, the state typically pays seven and a half percent, and that leaves two and a half percent that we pay on projects, which is a pretty good percentage to have to pay for improvements at the airport, and we'll continue to do that as best as possible. And I thought it would be nice to mention, we are actually working on a capital, long-term capital budget, and I can read down some of our needs that we're discussing, just so you'll have an idea of what we need out there. We put in a ten-unit T-hanger that was paid for primarily by the FAA and you all, two and a half percent, thank you. But we need another one. We've got twenty persons on our list, and we know ten of those are planes just waiting for a place to park, so we could easily do that. We're trying to, because we have more activity in the flight school, it's very active there now, we're thinking that it would be safer, and if we had better ingress and egress by way of a second entranceway to that ramp, that it would help. And especially when we have either, you know, the debates or just industry brings in multiple jets, the traffic flow gets kind of tough on the ramp when you've got a few big jets in there. And the state was kind enough to pay for a concrete pad to park these jets when they're here in the summer and it's hot because they've been sinking in the ramp, and we're asking them to provide a few more parking spots made out of concrete. And then also on our list is improving the turnaround. Because of the grade elevation at the east end of the airport, our parallel taxiway does not go all the way to the end of the runway. We have a what we call a turnaround, and it's really tight for the jets, and so, we're looking for funds to try to enlarge that and also add a spot so that while they're waiting for clearance, they can park and know the traffic and get turned around and out of there. And then if the funds were available, we would make a large fill and complete our taxiway. So, those are some, a few maintenance projects. If that helps you in your suggestion of our needs, then I could go on with page two, but if that's sufficient, then.
Things always amazes me is your fuel sales. That's continued to increase, haven't they?
Yeah, they're doing, actually, I should have brought the manager's report up. I think seven thousand gallons of jet fuel just last month. Anytime anyone sees anybody employed by Jess Correll or Lafayette Engineering, thank Because we do get corporate traffic in, but those guys are really helping keep our lights on out at the airport.
Any other questions?
No, it just, Mr. Quill's as good a guy as there is, but it seems odd not to have Mr. Powell up there talking about the airport as he enjoyed to do very much, but we're glad to see you.
Well, in his spirit, then, I'll go on another ten minutes.
No.
Because he said, if you build the ducks, build the pond, the ducks will land, and anything you can do to help us make the pond better, we appreciate it.
I do miss his, what I call stewardisms.
Stewardism.
He has.
Well, if you go back in the hallway at Stuart Powell Ford, there was a group that gave Patty a list of stewardisms, and they're framed and on the wall. And so, if you're out there getting your car serviced or whatever and have an opportunity, you need to go back and read them because I thought I'd heard them all, but there are an infinite number. I have not, so, and they're all priceless. Anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Seeing how we are now ahead of schedule, would you all like to take a break? Break? All right, break. And up next is the Danville Boyle County Economic Development Partnership, Inc. Mr. Ben Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Well, Kevin's going to probably start crying, but after thirteen years, I'm going to be wrapping up my tour of duty, serving on this partnership, so this will probably be the last time I'm before you. Have you all seen this new publication from the Kentucky Chamber? It's called Four Pillars of Prosperity: Making Kentucky More Competitive. Came out in February twenty nineteen. It's an update from their 2015 document. I called the Kentucky Chamber yesterday and said, can I have fifty copies of this? Because we need to read this really bad in this community. The headline, just quickly, is The Four Pillars of Prosperity is a Healthy, Educated, Skilled Workforce, a Quality Knowledge-Based Jobs, Twenty-First Century Infrastructure, and Efficient and Effective Government. The headline, for those of you that don't want to read the whole thing, Kentucky continues to trail the nation in the growth rate of jobs, population, and wages and salary, but has outperformed more than half of its bordering states in these categories. It ends generally like this, I think. Our conclusion, as it was a few years ago, is that although Kentucky is doing many things well and has cause for some celebration, competition for investment, jobs, residents, and opportunity is fierce. Today, we still have challenges to face, and even in areas where we are on the right track, competitor places seem to be moving faster. As we said in the initial four pillars, we expect we will have to address our weaknesses and maintain our strengths. We will have to take intelligent, intentional actions. If we want better, we will need to be better. Times of rapid change create opportunity for the bold. Kentucky must be bold now. So, this is from your Kentucky Chamber, hot off the presses. Okay? I am here on behalf of the nine organizations, including the City of Danville, to ask that we invest boldly in this strategic plan that you all helped us adopt. We are not funding the plan, we are falling behind, and we need to come up with the money to make the plan happen. In your packet, we've given you some details on the rationale for the dollar increase we're asking for. We fell short of funding the plan last year by nearly two hundred thousand, and the request we're putting in front of you this year is what we believe to be your fair share of allowing us to implement year three of the plan fully. So, as a chair who's getting ready to wrap up his term, I hope you'll come with me and fund this because this partnership is the way to move this community forward. And so, without further ado, I'm going to let Alan take you through the executive summary that should be in your packet and answer your questions on what the increased investment looks like.
Thanks, Ben. Yes, like he said, I want to get into those details, a little bit of the details of what those increases are, where that investment, specifically where that additional investment would be going to get us up to a funding level that allows us to implement the strategic plan, again, that we all sought and approved. So, I'm going to be kind of following along in that executive summary that you have and also referencing the previous year comparison budget that I think's in the back of your packet that shows where those increases are. First thing I want to talk about is staffing. Talk about it there under expenses in the executive summary. Any organization like this can only do as much as their staff has the time and ability to do. The strategic plan calls for a staff of three and a half people. We have, of course, Jody's our president, who's one of those three and a half. We have part-time administrative help through a relationship with the CBB, but we need to continue to staff up from there in order to do what we've been asked to accomplish. So, if you look in the budget, on the expense line, the expense section at the bottom of the first page, you'll see the total personnel costs actually show a decrease in next year from this year, but let me explain that. What we're asking for going into next year is to fund the economic specialists, so those numbers are in there. Last year, we actually had budgeting for the VP position, which was more expensive than economic specialist. So, if you switch those two out, we're actually asking for less for personnel than last year, though we didn't spend that money last year because that VP position was vacated when Mr. Goode left. But, in reality, we're really asking for more, which I figured you all would probably assume we're really asking for more. Because if you flip over to the next page, under administration, down in fees, there's a line item, Committee Coordination Contract Services, thirty thousand this year, zero last year. That's to fund some contract employees to do some specific tasks. This is something Ben and Jody have been working on for several months now, to kind of plug the staffing hole by going out and hiring some part-time contract employees to do some specific tasks that need to be done. So, we're asking for funding, partial funding for those positions too, thirty thousand dollars worth, which might equate to, you know, one position all year long. It might be two positions for three or four months. It just depends on how that ends up working out. So, if we fund that, plus the economic development specialists, that comes out to approximately seventy-five hundred dollar increase this budget year versus last budget year. Is there any questions on staffing? Because that is a little bit confusing, and it's also, you know, your personnel costs are always going to be a big part of your budget for an organization like this.
What is the economic specialist? What sort of, what would that entail?
That's basically an entry-level economic development person. So, someone who is doing a lot of research, doing a lot of administrative tasks versus being able to do, you know, some of the more detailed tasks on their own. And kind of where we are in building out the staff is, we think we can fill that position. After Mr. Goode left, we had a hard time of finding additional candidates for the VP position.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the other items of major increase. Again, let me call your attention to asset development, which is on the bottom of the second page of the comparison, of the comparison budget. You see, we're asking for, or we're budgeting for a hundred thousand dollars in asset development next year. That's all increase. This is an area where we haven't kept up or even started with the strategic plan. We have to develop additional properties to be available and marketable for development. We also need to do, pursue some things like pad-ready sites and possibly spec buildings. That takes a lot of time. You don't turn that on immediately, and it takes funding. So, that's obviously one of the large areas of increase, is the asset development piece. We realize there may be some restrictions on what municipalities can spend money on if their private property's involved, and Chairman Ben back here recognizes that difficulty and is putting together a task force to address that issue immediately to basically figure out, how do we go about pursuing asset development in terms of purchasing land, developing land, pad-ready sites, spec buildings, whatever. So, we know we're going to have to spend money, we know it takes time, we don't want to delay another year to get the asset development progress started. Any questions on asset development? The other big piece, another large piece, is workforce development. I think that's shown back on the third page. This is an area where there's been a lot of discussion and coverage about our efforts in workforce development. A lot is going on in workforce development. Our workforce development that's chaired by Ennis and Aaron, the Dynamic E's, is doing a great job coordinating and working with employers, working with the school systems, working with BCTC, but there's funding needed to help them continue that process, and there's some specific tasks that we can help them with that just require money. And so, you see there listed four different uses of funds for next year, and these are coming from their committee. These are requests they have to help them continue the workforce development efforts in the community.
Were you here when Shepherd's House made a presentation?
No.
I would ask somebody to reach out to them and make the connection, because they seem to be doing great work, and one of the challenges is employing these people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's, the key issue is still all of our employers finding good people. So, it's, do we have them, and are they trained, and are they able to get to work and do what they need to do? The third area of significant increase, you'll find on the second page under marketing, you see Opportunities Zone Development. I have a twenty-five thousand dollar plug there, which again is all new, all new funding. That's in recognition of a couple of things. One, that to get some things going on in downtown, again, is going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take some money, just in general, to push some projects that we've been talking about for a while, to get those kind of off the pegs, going to take some additional effort. And parallel to that, we have a specific opportunity, a window opening with opportunity zones, which we, which might help those efforts. So, again, time is critical. So, again, time is critical. If we're going to increase the effort for downtown development, now's kind of the time, because we have this new tool, along with a lot of other tools that might be out there. We don't know exactly, we call this Opportunities Zone Development, we don't know exactly how that money would be spent, but we do feel like it's important to get in the budgets and funds designated for downtown development and potentially taking advantage of the Opportunity Zone from the new tax law. Any questions about that?
I want to do a shout-out for the workshop on the Opportunity Zone. Does everybody know about that coming up?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
You ought to take a minute, while the public is here and the media is here, to...
Yeah, just a brief, Opportunity Zone is a new designation of census tracts from the federal tax reform law from a couple of years ago. Our downtown census tract qualified and is now an Opportunity Zone, along with about 140 around the state, so there's Opportunity Zones.
144 total.
144 in the state, and most counties have one. Lexington has eight or nine, Louisville has 15 or 16 census tracts that are opportunities that have been now defined and approved as Opportunity Zones.
And Danville has three.
Has one.
One.
Yeah. We applied for three.
We applied for three.
Bull County applied for three, got approved one, and it's where we're sitting right now.
Yeah.
It's the census tract that's roughly from Lexington Road, Clark's Run, to Maple.
And the railroad tracks to Stanford.
To Old Stanford. So, it's downtown census tract where we sit, where center sits, where the hospital sits. So, it's our main area. So, what that does is it qualifies for some tax breaks for, on capital gains. Investments can be made in this zone for a window of time that allows you to defer and lessen capital gains from past investments and then have no capital gains on the investment going forward. Now, that's a tool, you know, it's a benefit that has to be used in concert with the project, you know, that's being developed, that's being discussed, and possibly other tools, other ways of raising funds and getting tax benefits. But, the key is, the window of opportunity for that is, to get the full benefit, those investments have to be made, I think, by the end of next year, and then anything past that, the benefit declines, you don't get as much benefit, and then I think it runs out in 2027. I think that's the window where the Opportunity Zones exist. Past there, no additional investment. If you're still holding that investment, you still get benefits for 20 or 30 years, but no new investment after that. So, it is a defined window of opportunity, which, you know, and I think, I think we should have been asking, you know, for this funding for downtown anyway, but it really highlighted the importance of, and the timeliness of being able to take advantage of that new, that new tax break.
And I think it's important for the public to know, how large is this pool of potential money?
I mean, anybody with gains. So, what it does is, anybody, any investor who has capital gains, which could be literally billions and billions and billions of dollars, so anybody who has gains, who wants to take that money and reinvest it in something, real estate, a business, they now have an incentive to do that in an Opportunity Zone. So, the advantage is, if you're in an Opportunity Zone, you can attract that capital more so than if you're not in an Opportunity Zone. But, it is competitive, because there's a lot of Opportunity Zones. So, again, part of it is getting out there and making yourselves known to the people who have that capital and want to reinvest it. There's a lot, the session next week is very important to make us all more understanding and familiar with it. There's a lot of education going on now on this, around the state and around the country, trying to figure out exactly how it's going to work.
March 28, 10:00 to noon, Pinter County Community.
Any other questions on those expense sides?
I had one question, Alan. If you could help me understand the benefit of the wage, area wage survey, I was under the impression that annually, industries do complete required salary information by industrial classifications that show how much a certain type of employee is paid, and that information is available already. Is that not true?
Well...
I'm going to let Jody answer that, because Jody and I have talked about the need for a salary survey quite a bit.
One, there may be surveys to that extent in a certain industry. Two, it may be proprietary, and it's not shared with us, or it may be blind information that only comes for us for certain sectors of their workers. For example, the workforce at TransNav is going to be very different from American Greetings versus L S C Communications. So, our hope, because we are often skewed by being included in the Bluegrass Area Development District, from the standpoint of the percentile of jobs and wages, we want to emphasize particularly a regional, and that's not, that term's not on there, but maybe a four-county survey that more fairly unskews and states exactly what entry-level plus matured levels of wages would be within certain areas. And so, that's something that should be done, in my opinion, on a regular periodic basis, two to three years, but it's something that's always asked. And so, at present, we're providing federal data for that purpose, and, again, it's skewed by being in the Lexington-Georgetown area in the Bluegrass region, and our wages don't reflect the same being at the southwest corner of the Bluegrass region. If you have any other questions, isn't it great to have officers who get it? I just want to commend my officers. So, if you have any specific drill-down-in-the-dirt root questions, I'll be glad to answer those relative to the budget.
I'm going to ask our city manager, what was our total contribution last year?
I think that's...
Seventy thousand.
Seventy.
I thought we did some additional.
Seventy-two, fifty-five.
No, the surge funding or the match funding occurred in the previous year.
Okay.
City funding, over the course of 10 years, because I've just recently provided that data, went from a negative $2,000 in 2009 to 70 last year, by virtue of the pass-through Heart of Danville funding, and that was the first year last year that that was separated And we'll be glad to share that information, because we've had other requests.
I was going to ask about the asset development.
Yes.
How important is that to keep us relevant and competitive?
It's extremely important, because we have various parcels of property around the community that are not yet in a state of readiness to proceed for industrial development. They may not even be zoned industrial, and, of course, that's always a big question for our community as to where that's located. You know, the problem is, is that unless you have an entity such as the Industrial Foundation that has made it its purpose to invest and develop those properties, I can tell you that individuals, property owners, do not want to invest to put in curb and gutter and road and water and sewer and have a nice, developed park plan. They don't make those investments, because they just, they just want to sell their property. They don't make the efforts such as, well, the only private one that I'm aware of that is essentially full is the Minor Road Industrial Park, which is where Dignio and Limestone and Lafayette and United Warehousing is located. That was privately developed many moons ago, not by the Industrial Foundation, but obviously it's full, and we would like to see as many other opportunities for growth in the area, publicly, privately owned, public-privately partnershiped. The more product, the better for me.
It's part of where we're lagging. And, again, if you just say, okay, we have a plan that outlines year by year the things we need to go do, this asset development area is one that we have not included in past budgets and we're falling behind. So, again, introduces the concept that we're going to have to invest in our infrastructure.
We have, of course, done that in a major way, in terms of water improvements to the Industrial Foundation area, to the border of that property, but more needs to be done.
Excellent opportunity to jump in. We have an existing industry that is planning a significant transformative, maybe I should say, expansion in the next few years here in Danville, and I usually start out in the morning with the plant engineer, operations manager. He gets in at about 5:00 a.m. I start communicating with him about 6:00 a.m., and then we needed to have a response as to the availability for water infrastructure, actually a new source of water infrastructure, for that expansion to proceed. Thank you so much for taking some weight off of Earl's shoulders, but he's a wonderful Public Works Director. He's always been the expert that's essential to what I do every day, and he immediately responded between that, golly, I think I woke him up, 6:30 and between whatever, and I had to be at the EDP Board meeting, but the corporate entity, or corporate manager, had the answer before the corporate decision-maker was in the room at a meeting at 10:00 a.m. and had the response, a formal response, as to how we can do this and how we can serve you. So, you know, that doesn't always happen, because we've got so much on our plates, but I want to thank you for Earl. That was a turnaround within three and a half hours, and we had the answer to the company that we needed to allow the discussion to go forward, to say, yes, we can serve you.
So, this request is, if you think about it in terms of the citizens you serve, this is what, 10 bucks a citizen, what we're asking, for healthy economic development. We've really come a long way. I mean, I want to end it, thank you. We formed a plan, and if you like the plan, it's my idea, if you don't like the plan, it's Ron's idea.
But you invested...
We worked together and we did a plan, because we needed some independent eyes to come into this community and say, what do we need to do to keep being forward-thinking? And we reorganized this board, and Ron's now on the board, and Mike is on the board, and Denise is on the board, and Mike is coach-chairing two of our committees, and he's on the executive committee. So, we've done away with this, you're not at the table, okay? You're at the table. And we had a pretty robust conversation yesterday about the need to be going, what do we need to be doing? What do we need to be doing? Well, I'm going to look at you and go, let's do the plan. That's what I'm asking.
Jody, you heard me reference a minute ago, heard me reference a minute ago, the Shepherd's House.
Yes.
Connect the Industrial Council with them.
The Industrial Council of Managers?
Yeah.
They're actually helping to drive that train, because we are communicating with the Council of Managers all the time about how we can present opportunities, such as with the Resource Fair that we'll be having at the Public Library on March the, excuse me, on April the 25th, 1 to 6, and building on our resource directory that we just launched and put on the website from the Workforce Development Committee, such that Shepherd's House is one resource if you have someone who is not gainfully employed and they're suffering from substance abuse, or they have been in incarcerated circumstances. You can access that resource directory and find the resource to go to. We want to have the fair or the event to allow employee, potential employees and employers have that opportunity to interact as well.
Kathy Miles is on our board, is the ASAP coordinator, and Kathy and I had coffee the other day. Jody and I are going actually to the ASAP meeting on April 26th, because what Kathy and I are all trying to do, is we need to connect social services and the economic development agendas more intentionally, and part of the back-to-work thing is part of that strategy. That's where the agencies have to work together with us to try to make that happen.
So, one of the things I heard this morning from Shepherd's House is housing. Many times, these folks who go through the program successfully, they don't have a place to go.
Right. More to report later, it's an early stage, but I think that we're already in a position to be able to create a transitional housing opportunity.
There you go.
That directly interfaces with job training and knowing that local employers can depend upon the quality of employee coming into their workforce. And we're working with the managers as well to understand that, you know, hey, we need your grace to be able to work with potential employees that have had a rough road a hoe, and they're making a turn for the right.
Yeah.
And we need for you to be working with those and give them an opportunity. But, early stage, I think that there may be an opportunity to make that happen, because we've had a few false starts here in the community by some entities that are trying to locate properties to do just that.
And one of the things that Kathy and I have talked about is, look, we're going to need the community's help, because there tends to be controversy of nobody wants those houses near them, and the answer is, we need to support these people as they try to transition effectively back into society, as they need. So, stay tuned, as Jody said, but I think the interdependence of those needs in terms of workforce development is part of what we're talking about.
Senator Jody, if I may, you know, I'm recalling Kyle's comment in doing our study a couple of years ago in terms of the significance of the private sector support that was existing at that time and in prior years as compared to the governmental support, and his conclusion was that we had unusually large private sector support in funding that joint activity at the time. Now, in this budget proposal, is it correct that for the first time, we're asking for the governments to provide greater than 50% of the total budget? I think that's a change from prior years, if my memory serves.
No.
Well, not early on, but the balance has come more into equality, or maybe 60/40 private in recent years with the aggressiveness of private fundraising. We definitely were all in the public column in the 2008, '09, '10 period, but then we have ramped up to more of an equity, which we continue to want to build. Now, dependent upon staff is to be able to go out and do that work, which, for example, how Goode did so wonderfully.
So, I'd give you a little bit of a different answer, Ron, and that is, for the last two years, on my watch and chair, we have come to you all and said, it is not our place to give you an allocation. It is your place to look at what this plan is going to take, and we trust you to be good stewards of your taxpayer dollars and give us what you can. You have not been able to fund us at the level we needed to get to the plan. But, it's changed, because I'm handing the car keys off to our capable treasurer, Alan, is that this year, they're giving you a number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Danville-Bull County Parks and Recreation. Oh, before you go, excuse me, I do need to say this. I want to publicly thank Ben Nelson for providing persistence, guidance, therapy, and I say this with all candor. We would not be where we are today without you, and I don't know of a single person that could have pulled off what you have done. I think that needs to be known to all.
Well, you all can do me a favor, and I'm going to quote one of y'all. We've gotten in the boat together, we're still not rolling together as well as we are, and that's what I leave you with. Thank you.
Don't run off just because you're retiring.
I'm gone.
Ms. Amber, hi.
Hi. How are you all?
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
We're good, Amber.
Hopefully, it's nice that way.
And how are you?
I'm good.
Good. You're not nervous, are you?
Not at all.
Come on. We're all friendly up here.
It's just us.
Yeah. We know you're trying to fill in for the shoes of your chair.
Yes.
And the missing director, but you can just be calm, we're good.
Okay. All right. Well, you all tell me what you all want to talk about, because, like I said, I don't even know what you... Well, you all tell me what you all want to talk about because, like I said, I don't even know what to remotely begin. I sent in our budget of what we were requesting this year. Then also provided, as of right now, it, way things stand, it's 55-45 still until something changes. Keeping it the way that it had always been where the county did 55% and then the city did 45. And then I also put in there some financial statements.
I thought that was on the Bunny Davis Center only. 55-45?
Yeah, the 55-45 is for Bunny Davis Center.
Okay.
And then Millennium Park's 50-50.
Yeah, Millennium Park's 50-50. Yes, you're right.
Thank you, sorry.
And then within the budget, of course, as you all could tell, I'm requesting more money for this year versus what had been in the past. Some of those is, is the director's salary. I took up our maintenance staff line item a little bit. I took up our utilities some. I've already noticed an increase in, in the utilities that are coming in. I took up our retirement. I kind of tried to get our numbers back to where they made a little bit more sense, that they were a little bit more realistic. And brought some of the numbers closer down to what we actually, the revenue comes in with it and kind of made it balance out a little bit better in that, that area. I met with Ron and Michelle and we, we talked about that. And Ron gave me some good tips and some good pointers on where I need to go and what I need to do. So I tried to put that in with our budget for this next fiscal year. And then we did, we did add a, under the fitness center, we added an office manager, a full-time office manager, but I didn't put in any more money. I just kind of dispersed money a little bit and made it all, I mean, if you look in there that I'm at, we're getting, requested a little bit. Our total for it is a little bit less than what I had in there even last year with putting a full-time staff member in there.
If I may, Amber.
Yes, ma'am.
When we had talked before, you had said that you'd put your capital into this budget. You did do that, correct?
Yes.
Capital items.
Yes.
So that, you know, we don't have a separate capital budget besides the budget. So this is an all-inclusive budget, the way that we'd ask them to do in the future.
Yeah.
Very good.
And I could have put a whole lot more capital stuff in there, but I thought we'd take little baby steps getting there and then, and working our way up.
So you're gonna get asked this question by the county, so I'll go ahead and ask it.
Okay.
You're requesting more from them than you are the city?
Mm-hmm. It's just how it kind of worked out within, within that 55-45, like.
Okay, I understand now.
You see, it, that's kind, that's how it's been every year and until something were to change, I guess is whenever it were to go 50-50 or whatever the decision is made, that's how it would normally be.
But we are 50-50 on everything but Bunny Davis.
Yes, yes, sir.
I would say, Mike, on that point, we in the past have not accounted for and, and charged the county for any use of water and sewer, for example. And that's a big contribution that we have made that's not accounted for in that 50-50 in Millennium Park. Just, and that, that's been kind of understood, I guess, at the county in prior years in terms of what they do fund. We're, we're providing additional support.
Do we still do the insurance capital or did we?
I, I think that is now 50-50. We don't, we don't pay for that.
I write a check every month and send it to Michelle for the insurance.
Insurance is through us, but she reimburses us for the insurance, so that goes through the.
Okay.
Yeah.
The budgeting process.
Gotcha.
Are we, is, are we splitting the water this year?
We haven't got to the point of discussion on that yet with the county and the budget development. But it's, it's an interest that we have because that's a fairly large amount of money that we're contributing without reimbursement. You know, I think it is important for us to all, to recognize and for the community to recognize that in total, we're talking about $900,000 or so, close to a million dollars in terms, in terms of total appropriation between the city and the county for all of these activities. So it's a significant amount of money.
Amber, do you have an assistant?
Morgan, she helps me out in the office, but that's it.
Okay.
No, she is. The board just appointed her full-time March 1st. We did not have somebody in there full-time helping out. It was just me doing it.
And this budget is essentially, and tell me if I'm reading it wrong, is essentially Millennium Park, I mean, it doesn't include the.
It's broken out into three areas. It's broken out into the Millennium Park and then the Fitness Center and then the pool.
Okay. But the little city parks that are just in city limits are not included in?
No, no, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
I was under the impression that the county did not want to contribute money to the Fitness Center. Did that change or did that ever, ever really happen?
No, they, they took the money out that they would have put into the Fitness Center and put more of it into the park, I guess you could kind of say, last year. So I fixed the numbers in that a little bit. But they didn't take away all money from the Fitness Center. They didn't want to do all of that.
This is not directed toward you because it, it's a discussion that needs to take place with others. But when I look at the mission statement, it says to supervise development of new park land and to maintain existing park facilities, plural. When you go back to the 1990 ordinance that both the city and the county agreed upon, it clearly states all parks. And so I think, I think we have to begin to have that kind of conversation as to, are we, are we going to abide by our own legal ordinance? Or, or not? It just needs to be cleared up. And that's, that's not directed toward you.
No, I, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand. I, I think that we would like to see all parks under Parks and Recreation. It makes more sense. But in return for that to happen, the budget has to grow too and, you know.
With the absence of a board member here, that's the feeling you're getting from your board then, is that Parks and Rec should be all-inclusive?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. We're not, again, we're not trying to put you on the spot.
And I'm not saying that one person over the other needs to run it. That's not coming out. But we would like to see, you know, it's Parks and Rec, you know, one person, when they've got a problem at Jackson Park, they don't need to call us and then us turn around and say, well, you need to call City Hall for that. That's something that they handle. It needs to all just be under Parks and Recreation. That's who handles, you know, all the parks around here. Goes and checks on things, maintains it, does whatever needs to be done with all of those other parks.
Yeah, and that's certainly better for the citizen and/or visitor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thanks again for the holding us together during this.
You're welcome.
Time that we're in.
You're welcome.
And the other, the other small neighborhood parks do need to be under you all's care because if they were, there'd be a lot of preventive things done before something happens.
Yes.
We will, we will keep working towards that in upcoming proposals.
Good.
You've done a great job in, in, in a difficult situation. And I want you to know that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I will echo that and also your, your staff, your supporting staff that has also gone above and beyond, all of you have. And we, we're trying to get you out of this limbo position that, that we are all in. So just bear with us.
And we'll, we'll direct Michelle to take care of you financially, personally.
Well, I, I get to meet, I get to meet with her once a month, so I, I enjoy that.
You what? Oh.
Yeah, I get to come and see her once a month and we talk about.
And you enjoy it?
Yeah, I don't have a problem coming to talk with her.
She doesn't make you cry? She makes other people cry.
No, she doesn't do that to me.
No, really. Thank, thank you.
She does it to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
We do appreciate it.
Any other questions that I could try to?
Chief, would you go get Steve Hunter?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Glutton for punishment.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Next up, Danville, Boil County, Planning and Zoning. Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Steve the Hammer Hunter.
What I would like to hear most from you, if you don't mind, is what you're doing in some projects that you're undertaking to move this community forward?
Well, we were just talking out in the hall. I apologize about that. I was just talking to the EDP folks out there about an idea I've been thinking about. It's sort of jointly connected and it, we'll just get into that a different time. But it's about our mapping and I'll, we'll share that at probably a different time. That's why I was out in the hall. I apologize. But first I want to start by just, again, introducing myself, Steve Hunter, Director of Planning Commission, and start by just saying thank you, guys. You guys know how appreciative we are. A, that you fund us every year and B, that you give us great space in this building, parking, and almost like we have co-employees here. And I do appreciate that. I hope you guys know that. I need to say that, that we're very appreciative of that. And I also want to say quickly, I've done this for several years, going to my local governments, asking for money and asked for a lot of money. And I think I might have said this last year, maybe not, but I, I understand what it's like to be the Planning and Zoning Commission and walk before a city commission or a fiscal court and ask for $75,000. In the hierarchy of all the stuff you guys are hearing, parks and EDP and job, I mean, we're way down here. And it's hard to stand up here and tell you why we need this money when I realize we're not a high priority when you talk to most citizens. We do kind of a job underneath the surface, I hope. But it's an important job, but we're not going to get accolades nor are we looking for it. But it's just tough to get up here and ask you all for money year after year. And I, and I just want you to know, I understand that. And I'm mindful of that. And because of that, I'm gonna explain where that falls in. One of the issues is we don't ask for more money if we don't have to. We never ask for more money every year. And we also realize this is a competitive process of all these agencies. I'm not, I'm not naive to know that, hey, there's one pot of money and we're asking for some of it. You guys have hard decisions to make and I have to prove to you guys, A, I've been doing my job well and B, that we're worth the investment. And I can show you some of these things in the budget, what we're doing. I can show you all how we're doing more with less and we're working harder with less and we're doing more stuff than maybe we did last year. And I think that's the only thing I can show you that, why we're worth the investment. And with that, before I get into what the mayor just asked, I do want to walk through the budget. I hope you guys had this nice copy in there. I'm explaining something on it in just a second. But the mayor talked about some projects, but in general, we have a work plan. And I didn't bring that to you guys this year. I brought you our performance measures and the budget. That's all I submitted. But our work plan this year, we did several things and a couple of them I'll talk about in the budget. We did an RFP for legal services and an interesting turnout on that. Obviously, the Junction City project involved a lot of moving parts, including the future land use map that's coming our way. We've been working on constant mapping in our website, which is becoming a hit across the community, if not possibly the best mapping website in whole state. And I'm a little cocky about that, but I honestly believe it's the best map in the whole state of Kentucky the way it functions and it's free to the public. Perryville zoning map's already done for this year. Zoning ordinance, you guys know, is in progress. The comprehensive plan was recently amended twice, including goals and objectives. And Michelle helped me get some facts back there. Again, we're asking for $75,000, which is the same amount as last year and the same amount for the last five fiscal years. So the Planning Commission, even before I was here, has not asked for an increase. They might have come and asked you for something, maybe incidental and interim period, but the $75,000 is the same amount it's been since fiscal year 15. And with that, I'll jump to the budget and some of the things the mayor mentioned that maybe will jump out in the budget. And I'll then talk about some other projects and, and take any questions from you guys as we go. One thing you see on this, on the very left, hopefully everything's in color. You can see the little red on the text, the line items. Those are things we're gonna tweak on our line items for different reasons, deletions or just cleanup. Again, this is a very specific budget, different than it was in years past. Same as last year, but different than prior years. Very specific line item budget, ties right in with our QuickBooks program. And then you can see you've got year-to-date, you've got last month, projected, you got our budget, our amended budget already. We've already done one budget amendment. We're getting ready to do another. And then eventually you see our preliminary budget on the right that's got the blue shading and the yellow lines and whatnot. The other thing I'll just point out, you see we numbered this Excel spreadsheet on the right for ease of referencing. And I'll reference those numbers on the right as I just walk you down through a couple of line items. To start with, lines two and three, again, you see lines two, that's the city contribution we're asking for. Line three is important. The county gave us $65,000 last year. We're gonna ask them for 75. We have asked them for equal shares in prior years and then they fund us what they fund us. We, we ask for a certain amount and they give us a number they're comfortable with. We are gonna ask them for 75. Again, they could give us the last year amount at 65 and I'll tell you guys, we'll just deal with it. We're not gonna get upset with whatever happens with either government. We're just gonna move forward and figure things out. That's kind of our approach. And I'll show you why that's possible this year. So line two and three, I think it's just interesting to note where we're at with those two issues. I want to point out lines 12 and 13. These are kind of big deals and relate to some new things. Line 12 is our site plan applications. That revenue stream is gonna drop significantly for us, if not over by 50%. And that is because of what I mentioned to you at the last commission meeting. We are gonna change the threshold on when we require site plans to be submitted to the Planning Commission. We think it's a fairly big burden to ask everyone to do a full set of engineered plans for every single build we do in this community. So as you remember, I mentioned at the commission meeting, site plans are now gonna have a new threshold when they're required. Bumping it up for commercial, bumping it up for industrial. The things that fall below that go straight to a building permit. It streamlines development in this community. It makes things happen faster. There's no reason why we want to see a dollar store have to go through a full plan review when it's 9,100 square foot. They build those as fast as they almost drop out of the sky. You guys know that. We wouldn't require that to go through site plan review. That would, that's $521. But on the flip side, it helps things happen faster. We can handle that at the permit phase and deal with it on the permit side. But all across the board, that cuts that revenue stream by about 50%. So the revenue's dropping on site plans, which is one of our big revenue sources. Right below that zoning permit, same thing. You heard us say at the meeting with the zoning ordinance rewrite, we're gonna get out of the zoning permit business on residential and agriculture. Mayor mentioned earlier about housing opportunities. We talk about affordable housing. Our comprehensive plan has specific goals on, on affordable housing, homeownership. We think it's counterintuitive to charge these large permit fees. Lady came in yesterday to build a house out on Webster somewhere, $400 and some dollars to both guys. The building inspectors now are in our offices. You guys haven't come by. The county judge has moved the building inspector in our office. You literally pay us 400 and you turn around and pay him 400. We're not building inspectors. We don't stand in the mud. We don't know what drywall's supposed to look like or how many feet studs are supposed to be spaced. So it seems a little overburdenous to, that someone wants to build a house or do an addition on their house and they have to come in and pay the zoning guys a fee for something. We don't provide much of a service on that. So we're, we've, with the zoning ordinance amendment, are getting out of the business May 1 of zoning permits on single-family dwellings, accessory dwellings for single-family or agriculture. We're still gonna be involved in apartments, commercial, industrial, the things where we need to be out there, checking parking and landscape and drainage. Well, that change, as you can see, drops the budget about $12,000 right there. So another big hit on our budget. Zoning permits, we're gonna live less on those, we hope. And we'll get some big hits during the year. These rick houses, for example, that's about a $4,000 fee every single time. But I want to throw this out there because even though we're gonna stay on zoning permits for commercial, industrial and, and multifamily, those are still somewhat a burden on the community. I mean, to say we're gonna try to encourage single-family development, affordable housing, that's one. But we also want to see new businesses come to town. So for example, if a new Krogers was built, let's just throw that out there. $100,000 square foot building. I mean, we charge 20 cents a square foot. Mary, you'd have to do some quick math on that for, what's 20 cents a $100,000? It's a big number.
That's about $20,000.
$20,000 permit fee to the Planning Commission. And that's a big number. For what? I mean, we do a job, but we do the same job for that $10,000 square foot. mean, we do a job, but we do the same job for that 10,000 square foot building, it's about the same timeframe, so something we, we still may want to talk about, we're dependent on that 20,000, that is coming in on your commercial clients, and that's not something most communities do. There's still permit fees through the state and through the building inspector, but to come in and pay the Planning Commission $20,000 to get a new grocery store, I'm appreciative the day that check's written, that'd be a great windfall for us, but again, as a community, if we see the benefit of not charging those fees on the single-family customers, I also see, on the commercial side, why we may want to look at that at some point in the future too.
What's causing a delay in that discussion, it seems like that would be a fairly quick and easy discussion with the planning.
Well, we did not phase those out in the zoning ordinance rewrite, because, because A, it's still a process, we feel some value to get out there and review, but we could review that for, at zero, the disadvantages, our building inspector only has certification through certain levels, some of this stuff still goes through state plan review, it doesn't stay home, so it is helpful that there's still someone locally that can assist with the construction and some oversight, as far as the, the, the amount in the budget, 20,000, it's incidental almost to us at this point, so if down the road, the community thought we ought to get, phase those on down, roll the rate down, or get out of that role, it'd be $20,000, but we'd figure it out. But I could see the benefit of the zoning permits functioning like they do in other communities, which is not a hard fee on the consumer, it, there's a building permit, and there's a multiple review process that typically happens at no cost to the consumer.
I would encourage you to, to, to move on that post haste, the Planning and Zoning Commission does represent the community, so have that conversation, get us as competitive as we need to be.
I understand, and, but at that point, for this budget year, if we were to roll that 20 down to zero, let's say, we just didn't want to ask for any more money, but that, that's for a future discussion, but again, in my experience, the community I've been in, the only one, that were, there wasn't, there wasn't a fee like that, everything was combined in the building permit, so there was one fee, one building permit, 11 agencies reviewed that permit digitally, you went and applied for one permit, shot off to the fire department, health department, planning and zoning, the electric, everyone was doing their reviews through a digital checkbox system, so the developer only saw one permit, one fee, and then everyone had to sign off on it, and, and that's one-stop shopping, and it's fast, that was a four-day turnaround for all permits, with all 11 agencies doing their review. We're not there yet in this community, and at this point in time, zoning permits, but I did the same job in the field, I just didn't charge a fee, I still went out counted parking and looked at drainage and looked at landscaping, I just didn't charge a fee, there was a permit, and then I got a note saying, hey, you got a job to do, go out and do it, and we didn't, we didn't charge the consumer, but the government's backstopped that amount, that's the difference, is the city and the county paid to have a million-dollar Planning Commission where I was, to do all these, these things, the difference is the consumer didn't pay, but the government paid the difference of that 20,000 in this case.
So there probably should be a balancing act, there's somewhere, not a overcharge of the consumer, the business developer, but as you're pointing out, the flip side of that is that the taxpayer's going to have to pay through the government.
It still happens, in a sense, that's right, it's exactly, the city manager's exactly right, now, the difference is, as we grow as a community, and we get these other kind of, kind of the red tape all the way, you'll see these other fees pick up, plats and zone changes, and, and again, the biggest fee source we should have, which right now is a zero, I believe, let me show you in here, construction review fees, which is line five, is a zero, that should be the biggest source of revenue for a Planning Commission, and that, that's a 1% charge that we have when we're building streets and sidewalks and new subdivisions, we're building zero new subdivisions in this community. Most towns that are growing and their jobs are growing, they're growing neighborhoods, they're growing streets, the developer comes in and plats streets, they have to pay the Planning Commission a 1% kind of admin review fee, that should be the biggest number on the revenue side, if you're growing as a community, but ours is zero, we haven't planted any new streets since I've been here almost in two years, we're not growing any neighborhoods, we're not building any subdivisions, we have adequate inventory of lots, I guess, and it's just kind of a slow row as far as residential growth, so it kind of is all related together. But someday, if we grow and we're building subdivisions and neighborhoods, that's the money that will, will probably pay the whole budget, and at some point in time, that should be a third of your revenue, if not half your revenue stream ought to come from that one line item.
So you've identified a fee structure that is an impediment?
We think so, but it, it's been expected, it's been in place for a lot of years.
Do you know of situations where it has, has worked to our disadvantage?
I'm not aware of that, because I haven't had people complain that it's a burden, it just feels different, I haven't had to collect one of those big box fees, but I could imagine the day a Walmart or a dollar store or Target comes in and pays a $20,000 check, I'd be like, wow, that's a big check, never seen such a thing for a role that we would play in, let's say, a one-hour plan review, I mean, that's about what it takes us to look through a site plan, about one hour.
Well, I'm thinking of Kroger right now, Kroger is arguing against the property tax situation, so everybody's looking to save a nickel.
Sure.
Especially larger businesses. I mean, if you said to me right now, eliminating that $20,000 item would be a benefit to you, I'd lobby to split that with the county.
Yeah, well, right now, I'm going to show you at the bottom of the budget, I think we're good this year, but it's something I think we want to talk about, because I think that would be a benefit, and I agree with the city manager, there might be a middle ground there we'd want to approach, maybe there's a minimal fee, as opposed to that 20 cents a square foot, again, this past year, all the commercial revenue were, were just the rick houses that were built, and they're approximately about $4,000 per permit, which is a good thing, so it just takes a few of them to hit the 20, keep building rick houses, we're good, but on the flip side, the mayor's right, at some point, is that where we want to go, to hit the consumer with those, with very little support. So let me keep rolling on through and explain one other thing here, and we'll get to the expenses, lines 19 and 20 are interesting, our budget, when you look at our total revenue is approximately about $5,400 less, in line 20, our total revenue is about $11,000 less, but I want to point out, that is $46,000 less in revenue than 2016, so we're cutting fees, and that's $46,000 less, but we're asking for the same amount of money, and I'm going to show you, when we lose the revenue, how we've made it up on the expense side, because we've cut a whole bunch on the expense side. So jumping on down to line, we'll just jump to 35, personnel, some people think this is all proprietary, but you can see my salary's right there on line 21, we got a line item budgets all open, we really don't care if anyone knows what we make, there's each position, you can see a position we're deleting, maybe put some part-time seasonal into play, but we're not funding it this time, but line 35 is the total personnel, and you might notice our total personnel, which is our salaries for two people, CERS, everything down to our direct deposit fee of $4 a month, comes out at 129, 104, that's about the same as, as you can see, our budget amendment, 129, but you can see, we started the year at 160, as you guys know, we had a staff person resign, we did not fill that position, in fact, we eliminated that position, so we've gone from a three-person, full-time office to two, we just said, hey, we'll just move on, it's two people, and it's worked out fine, we're open five days a week, everything's the same, we just, two of us divvied up the third job and we're moving on. That saved us almost $44,000, when you figure all the benefits and all that, so that's one of those things, we lowered the fees, and we just made it up by going to a two-man office right there, it's kind of a push for us, but I do want to point out, in 2016, our personnel costs were over $173,000. So we have, in two fiscal years, have gone from 173 to 129, again, that's, that's $44,222 less, in our biggest expense category in two fiscal years. So there's where that kind of, we knocked the revenue down, but we just saved 40-some-thousand dollars in personnel, and then jumping on down line 46, these are the individual office categories, nothing much to talk about there, line 49 on the next page, want to point this out, this is interesting, and again, we got a line item budget, 49 is our vehicle, we got local and non-local travel broke out now, but 49 is our vehicle and vehicle maintenance, that number was $5,700 in 16, it's now $1,000, and you can see our year-to-date, we've only spent $98, that's oil changes and gas and whatnot, we don't spend a lot of gas, because I'm not real, I don't feel real comfortable driving that blue cruiser back there, so I tend to just drive my truck and just eat the cost of that, but, so we've only spent $98 the whole year in total vehicle costs, because we don't tend to drive the car a lot. Now it's dead in the parking lot anyhow, because we, we gotta get jumped at some point. But I want to talk about this line 58, this is a big deal, this is our contractual items, and it's gone up a little bit, you can see slightly from last year, but we now itemize all our contractual audit, attorney, we did, with the staff position that left, we did now contract out all our financial stuff with an accounting firm, so that's a new line, 55, so we now spend $4,800 a year to do all our financials, accounting, payroll, and we don't have to have a full-time staff person, so we lost the full-time finance person, and we contracted with an accounting firm. But I want to talk about our attorney fees real quick, this is interesting, we bid everything that we could, audit, other services, well, we put out an RFP this year for legal, and our attorney got a little upset about it, he, he said, what's wrong, am I doing a bad job, are you trying to get a new attorney, we said, look, we're just shopping every year, and no, no offense, but we're going to, we're going to put this out there on the street and see if we can get a better deal, and we welcome you to compete, we were not happy with the current rate of approximately $175 an hour, he said that was market, we said we're going shopping. Put out an RFP, we got several proposals, and we actually ended up with the same accounting firm, and got a flat retainer per month that's going to save us about $8,000 a year. Interesting enough, we have, we put that contract in effect in November, and from November through February, we've only netted $55 versus the old hourly rate versus the new flat rate, but the Board of Adjustments hasn't met since November, so the, it's been so slow, so the lawyers have really only been doing half their job, but we still saved $55 in three months on the flat retainer versus the hourly rate, and now we can use them as many hours as we want, and funny enough, they seemed to not answer the phone when we hit the $1,500 mark, which is the monthly retainer, seemed to get the voicemail more frequently, they answer quicker at the first of the month and slower at the end of the month, but it's working out, but we will see a lot more savings as we move forward, because the Board of Adjustments just hasn't been meeting, which is, again, they don't have to do any work at that point. So that was a big saving, we split the legal money between the two boards, and you can see that 86, we've only spent $1,000 year-to-date on the Board of Adjustments, and 9,000 on the Planning Commission, but over the year, we're fixed cost now, $18,600 is our total legal cost, because we now have a $1,500 flat retainer for this, and we ended up giving the bid to the same firm, so we just worked them a little bit and saved us a little bit of money. The other thing I will just point out then, line 69, our total expenses, little bit less than last year, again, it's sort of, going to the mayor's point, Mr. Scott, everything just sort of worked out from the savings, rolling the fees down, the savings on the expenditure side, we're about at the same point, and then the bottom line down there, line 71, 72, 73, we do now have a set operation reserve, which is a 10% formula of the revenue stream all the time, and then this extra money that we have had, it's dwindled a little bit, it's gonna, we call it legal reserve and construction reserve, pipeline money, if you guys want to call it something else, we, we've asked you all about, should we return that back to the governments, that's surplus money to us, and the answer was, why don't you keep it as a legal reserve, if we need to do something, there it is, but the way the budget operates, we're, we're always going to have a line 71, line 72's optional, and it's an escrow, we just hold that money there, and the idea is not to spend it unless we have to, and then that puts us at a zero balance, but that's $64,000, or $27, and what we'll call potential carryover for the next fiscal year. So again, to the mayor's question, could we roll the zoning permits off, we could, and we've got three years to still survive it with the surplus money, before we'd have to come back and ask you guys for more money. So it's a, it's a potential to do that, and there's the savings right there, so we don't think we need to ask you for any more money this year, and we don't anticipate doing it next year, unless some emergency comes up or there's some problem, we feel we're pretty comfortable, we've got money in the bank, and we're paying all our bills, and we're a staff of two now, and we feel pretty good about providing services at the same level as we were last year. So I'll leave it at that, the mayor alluded to one other thing, and again, I'm working on, you heard EDP's presentation, and they were, mentioned the word Asset Development Committee, and the mayor serves on that, we've been playing around with our mapping a little bit, and looking around the county on where potentially there could be large tracts of land that could be developed for various reasons, and we've been talking with Junction City about, we talked with the airport, about potentials to do maybe an employment center in that part of the county, so we've been just messing around with the maps in the free time, just drawing lines on the map, and we found several hundred acres, if not a couple, almost a couple thousand acres, that we feel could be developed, it's real raw, but it's just a mapping exercise, and so, in the hall, I was mentioning to those guys, I'd be glad to share that with the Asset Development Committee on what potentially could be some pockets in the county that could be developed, as a new industrial park or small industrial developments, or even commercial, I feel the Planning Commission's role is simply mapping, we, we hold a future land use map, and if this community is putting a target out there of, hey, here's another 500 acres we'd like to see developed, then it should be on the map, and that's the role we have, and I, I think at some point, if that committee, the asset committee says, hey, here's an area we'd like to grow the county, or expand an industrial park, I think our role then is to reflect that on the future land use map, so we all understand what the expectation is on the map, it's just a exercise from now, and just looking at acres, and looking at roads, and looking at water and sewer, and seeing where there's pockets that could be developed the most efficiently.
Why don't you share with the commission the process of smart growth?
Smart growth, the mayor just mentioned that, that actually is, I jumped past that, reflected in line 66, smart growth is, in cookie cutter fashion, is a process of developing your community, the, the real principles of smart growth is to lessen the burden on the taxpayer, so the ideas of smart growth is, as you grow your community, it makes more sense to grow it where you already have your best infrastructure and service. The communities that go out loud subdivisions, go out in the middle of nowhere, ends up to come back and buy them, because eventually, you're widening roads, you're building water lines, you're running sewer lines, you've got to hire more cops and firemen, so the, core principles of smart growth are, it's better to develop where you already have that infrastructure, have that service areas, whether it be schools, police, fire, parks, water, sewer, trash, whatever, it's smarter to grow your community inside out, it's less burden on your taxpayer to do that way. In the weeds part of smart growth is how you get there, it's about transportation planning, it's about downtown master planning, it's about infield development, it's about development incentives, it's about TIF financing, it's about opportunity zones now, it's about all the things you do to try to grow your community, to either transform it, be more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, better housing opportunities, better job creation, all that rolls downhill to all these pieces of smart growth, which are tools that you put in the zoning ordinance, the subregs, the comp plan, your stormwater ordinance, other city development incentive ordinance, EDP, all those things tie together in what smart growth is, and then we're going to try to have a one-day conference in the fall, and we've put a little bit of money aside, and we've got a committee that's working towards a one-day smart growth, where we're just going to talk about topics, about what smart growth is or isn't, and see if any of this sticks for Boyle County, see if there's any tools that may shake out of this that we could implement into our zoning ordinance or subregs, and it may be, we zero in on downtown master planning, it may be, we're dealing with farmland preservation, but if you talk to a lot of people that say they know a lot about smart growth, they always zero in on farmland preservation, the smart growth is about not growing on top of this prime farmland, and that's, that's the, that's the low-hanging fruit for smart growth, to say that, I mean, what that really means is, we don't want to take that farmland, but we also recognize we're going to grow, we need to grow, you have to grow, the issue is, do we grow there, or do we grow over here, and, and how do we get that done, through redevelopment or infield development, so, but a lot of people think smart growth means no growth, or don't, don't touch the farmland, and that's just half the equation, it's, it's, it's a balance of some growth and where's the appropriate way to grow, so, we're going to plan a one-day conference, talk about all those topics, and figure out, you know, hopefully invite the whole county, we meet this Friday again, and we're talking about, we're, we're thinking November 9th, 1st of November, possibly at Inter County, maybe Center College, and we got a really good group of eight people that are giving me guidance on how, I've never ran a conference, I've, I'm not an event planner, I don't know what we would want to eat, I just have gone to a couple of conferences, but I guess now I'm in the conference planning business, so.
You can subcontract that.
Yeah, we're working on that. Yeah, we're working on that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, I went kind of fast through this.
Any questions? We're glad you're here.
Yeah, I'm glad to make a comment. You're, you're being too humble on your accolades. You've done good for us. And I want to congratulate you for reaching out to Perryville and Junction City, and, and making them more comfortable with P&amp;Z. I think that's good for the whole. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing more with less.
We're trying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just let me know what day that check shows up. I'm just kidding. I will, I do need to mention this. This is funny. When the lady left, I didn't know we actually had to ask for the check. So these guys will know, and Michelle will know. I, I didn't know. I thought it just shows up in the mail once a quarter for last year. Then I realized the, I hadn't seen the check. And I said, "Well, you have to ask for it every quarter." So I was behind. And as soon as I asked Mr. Scott, definitely got it rolling. But I didn't know. So this has been a learning experience for me, too, on the finance stuff. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Great American Brass Band Festival, represented by the one, the only, Mr. Bill Bandy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Paris. Thank you for having me in here this morning. I did get, get the letter to attend. I think I got Monday or Tuesday. So I'll just, I'll give you just a real quick, some, just some brief talking points, and, you know, nothing you have to look at. I'll, I'll cover most of this. Some of it is informational, some of it you probably already know. Does anybody else need a copy? But, so let me, let me formally thank you for inviting me in this morning. For those of you in the room that I have not met, which is not a lot of you, but my name is Bill Bandy. As the mayor just told everyone, I was born and raised in Danville, left in nineteen eighty-four, and have been gone for about thirty-four years. I returned back to Danville a little over a year ago, after retiring from a career in the pharmacy business that took me through a lot of different moves throughout the eastern part of the United States. Retired to come back home. They say you can't come back home, but it's been a wonderful year that I've been back. I actually came back home to play in a rock band with my buddies from the seventies. Band's called Power Play, and we're having a great time. And along with that, one of my classmates from Danville High School, Lynn Ty, gave me a call last year, early July, maybe mid-July, and said, "I know you're retired, and you're enjoying your, your life performing in a rock band, but I've got a job that you may be interested in." And so I talked to Lynn, and the next call was to talk to Lynn's husband, Tom Ty, who was on the, is on the committee, was on the search committee, to name a new executive director for the Great American Brass Band Festival. And that has led me to be here to speak with all of you today. I will say that one of the first things that, that I, well, the first piece of paper I was given, after I told Bruce Richardson that I would accept the, the job, was a copy of the profit and loss statement. My background in the pharmacy led me to run hundreds and thousands of pharmacies, CVS Pharmacy, Begley Drug, for those of you that go back that far here in Kentucky, Revco Drug Stores out of Cleveland. And for the last fifteen years, I ran all the pharmacies with inside what many of you will remember as the Winn-Dixie supermarket. That was part of our community here in Danville since the early seventies. So I have experience with P&amp;L. I'm very P&amp;L-driven. Experience with, on the people's side of the business, experience on the music's side of the business. So you take all that, and you put it together, and it seems like a perfect fit for the Brass Band Festival. What, what I saw when I went home that day was a number that, I think the P&amp;L went back to two thousand and fifteen. And what I saw was a number that had dwindled as far as sponsorship, sponsorship levels. So I immediately started to think, how am I gonna, how am I gonna continue at the level that the folks that come to the festival have grown to expect and have also grown to enjoy? So you just heard before me how you do more with less. And so I've had to, I've had to look at that pretty closely. And without getting, you know, down into the weeds, one of the things that I'm doing is, as far as the amount of bands that we bring in, and the time in-between bands. So I'm looking at those things. I'm also reaching out to some new folks, to talk to them about some funding. If you look at the total funding, as, as the city of Danville, you are the biggest contributor from a sponsorship standpoint to the festival. And Ron, I don't know if you printed that out or not, but, and it is, it is very much appreciated. That, that has gone down, and I think that's probably the biggest reason why I'm here today. I'm here today to ask for your, for your help in potentially taking that back up. Over the last two years, just to give you a little bit of nuts and bolts on, on some of the, some of the really big hurdles I faced, is if we take the, the reduction in the funding that we've received from the city, and if I take the reduction in the funding that I received from the county, and if I take just two major donors that were eight thousand dollars apiece, what that did is it reduced our overall budget by about twenty percent. So that's, that's what I face. We're, we're, again, trying to do more with less. With that all being said, I feel good about where we are. I feel good about the future of the festival. In the past, we have grown to appreciate the amount of people that the festival brings in on a four-day basis. It's, it's around twenty-five thousand people during that four days. Brings in about three-point-four million dollars to the local economy. Many of these folks that are in the economy, I grew up with, and, and they're running businesses, and I personally know them. And so it's, I know it's, it's something that they appreciate. So there's a lot of things. I just heard mentioned, you know, this is, from my perspective, you know, born and raised here and coming back, you know, looking for a house, coming back to Danville, you know, I, I thought, well, we'll be able to come back. There'll be something that's being built. And it's been a little bit of a struggle. But with that being said, I hear these wonderful stories on people that have come to the festival, and because of what they have seen in our wonderful town, they have decided to move here. Some have decided to come and retire here. So I think that, you know, from a, from a payback, from what, what the city and what the county, as our two biggest sponsors, from what comes from, from with Dan, in Danville, Boil County, I think the payback is absolutely there. With that being said, again, being conscious of, of the festival, I started thinking before I ever sat in the seat, what, what can we do with the festival? How can we, how can we take the festival, not in a different direction, but how can we grow the festival? How can we, we're losing patrons through AIDS, through whatever it may be. How can we get young folks involved? What, what can we do? So I have started that. And it's gotta start small. It's not something that, that I'm gonna be able to change overnight. I've been involved with, Nikki's here today. I've been involved with Nikki and with the homeschool program, with some of the music classes. Brought in a trumpet player with myself, and we've sat down with, with some of the, some of the students. Involved with Valerie Hildebrand. That's the music teacher at Tolliver with the fifth, fifth grade folks, and went out and done music classes. And we've got these plastic trombones and trumpets. So trying to reach out. I've had both band directors from Danville and Boil County in to talk to those folks about, you know, not asking them what can they do for us, but what can we do from a brass band festival? How can we help you? How can we get your students excited? So my, my thought process on a, on a, on a grander level is, how can we take the festival from just a four-day event, and how can we make that more a part of the community on, on a quarterly basis, or, or whatever those things that come up? Mr. Paris was nice enough to allow me to put a little brass band group together for the tree lighting and under the brass band umbrella. And we did that. So, you know, things like that, I think that we can be more to the community than just a four-day event. I think that four-day event is a wonderful thing. Also, I will tell you that from a funding standpoint, and Tony is here this morning, so Tony, if I say something doesn't sound right, you know, just come over. I'll be glad to share the mic with you. But, so one of the things we talked about at, at a board meeting just within the last week, was, you know, from a, from a funding standpoint, we need to get out here, and we need to do some things on our own. So the spark is there. Tony is going to be putting together, I will be on the committee. We're gonna be looking at, you know, what can we do from a self-funding standpoint, from fundraisers within the community, concert series. There's, there's lots of things that we can throw out there, working with our great partners at Center College. So that, we've already started to explore some of those types of things. It wouldn't be something that would get into what, what they do at the Norton Center, but it would be, in, in our vision, it would be bringing in potentially musical acts that, that, that are very heavily featured toward brass. So anyway, that's, that's a thought. So while, while we are seeing less, less money coming in from a sponsorship donor standpoint, I feel very good about some ideas that we have. I feel very good about some new folks that have stepped in, and I feel very good about the future of the festival. So with that being said, I'll, I'll open it up for questions, if anybody's got anything you'd like to ask me this morning.
Questions for Mr. Bandy.
This is more of a futuristic question, but looking to the future. And I recognize this is your first year here, Bill, in terms of organizing and directing this. Has, has there been any discussion in any significant way about the potential for a brass band museum, which was an idea talked about maybe a few years ago, as a way to provide sort of that tourism and that connection, that service throughout the year?
That's, that's a good point you bring up. I, I did not know anything about that. I did learn about that from an email that I received from a gentleman from outside of the state. So, but there, that has not gone any further. I think that, as a matter of fact, I think it was going to be, from what I read, in the building where the Community Arts is now.
That was in the initial years ago before the Arts Center.
Yep.
There were some other locations in the last couple of years.
But Ron, that's, you know, that's certainly something to, you know, for us to, to look at, to delve into. I've got a, I've got a friend that's, there is a, there is a large museum for brass band that goes back, you know, hundreds of years, that's out in South Dakota, that, that Vince DiMartino is aware of, and he may be on the board out there. Also, I've got a friend in New Jersey that runs the largest music store in, in the country that's, that's on the board out there. So, and these are things that, in my mind, that I've got, you know, on my radar as well. You know, sort of like I talked about a minute ago, things can't, you know, not gonna be able to get everything done for this year. Somebody asked me yesterday at, at this little breakfast club I go to, and they said, "You got everything all set for the, for the festival for this year?" And I said, I said, "Just about there. About two thousand more moving parts, and we'll have it all, all ready to go." But that, that is, thank you for that. More questions?
I would be remiss if I didn't share a perspective. Bill and I go back away since nineteen seventy-three. And, well, I'm still here. I'm proud of that. And for him to come back to Danville is one statement. But he comes back to Danville, and instead of, and instead of enjoying retirement, as most people think of enjoying retirement, he takes on arguably one of the most difficult tasks in the community, even over my objection.
Yes, of course.
Because he asked me, what should I, he said, "I'm looking for something to do." And he said, "This is an opportunity." I said, "Don't do it. Don't do it." Next thing I know, he comes in, says, "I'm the new executive director of the Great American Brass Band Festival." So much for my credibility.
Well, you know, I'll tag on to that. And as, as Mike started to go through this, you know, this line items of this, and this, and this, and this, I listened, as I always listen. And I left, and there was no one at my house. My wife spends quite, quite a bit of time in the city of Seattle, and she happened to be in Seattle at the time. So I was able to go home and reflect on what we had talked about. And as I sat there and I thought about it, I'm thinking, okay, if not me, who? And I went to the next line item, if not me, who? And the one thing that I can say eight months after joining the Brass Band Festival is, the search committee had twenty-two applications from five states. As I move further and further into this, as I think about the afternoon that, that we had that conversation, I asked myself, how tough would it have been for somebody from Iowa to move into Danville, Kentucky, not knowing anyone, not having any relationships whatsoever, and to have been able to, gotten the things done at the pace that we've gotten done? There's a lot of things behind the scenes. There's a lot of people that you, you need to know. There's a, you know, those types of things. Those things had already happened for me. So I, I think I, I'm very fortunate that I had those relationships here in Danville, and was able to just come, come back home and start those relationships right up. I mean, I was in Greg Cottle's office before I ever officially started. So, you know, Greg's been associated with the festival, I believe, since day one. John Albright and I grew up together. So, you know, folks like that, you know, there was no startup. So, you know, to Mike's, to Mike's point, was like, well, if not me, then who? And so, and that sort of answered its question as I, as I got into it. But I do listen to what he has to say.
Listen and ignore.
That time, yes.
Do you want to plug your festival? And before you do that, I just want, while we're reflecting, I have a marching band student at Boil County. We're in our third year of that. It was a completely foreign place for me to be. I had, had no experience with marching band at all. She came home one day in, in the fifth grade and said she wanted to march. And she did that in the seventh grade as soon as she could. Marching band has, and music has changed her life. I have, I caused a little bit of a stir a few years ago.
No.
Because, no, never. Because I thought that this outreach to the, especially marching band children was already happening, and it wasn't. And I appreciate that you have acknowledged that, and are, you're gonna do that. And as a band mom, I, I want to let you know, I can help you to facilitate that in, in any way that I can. So.
Thank you.
On the Boil County side, you know, I probably could on the Danville side, too. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in Boil County, and we have a fairly new director there. He's only in his second year. And so this energy, those are the kids that are gonna keep this festival alive.
Exactly. I agree a hundred percent.
And those, those are the kids that are possibly gonna be on that stage someday. And this is the only, this could be the only exposure that they have to the professional musicians that are on that stage. And I appreciate that so much, and whatever I can do to help you. And actually, I want to, I want to come to your office and, and talk about some stuff.
Oh, that'd be great. And just, just so you know, I did not get into that. But both band directors, on their own time, came in together and sat with myself. And John Strobe, who works with me as our artistic director, he does all the legwork. We talk about the bands, and how do we fit this band into this slot, and who's the right type of music, and different things. But John is the current president of the Kentucky Music Educators Association. So he's the one that's doing all the judging when they go to solo and marching contests and all that. So we met with both, both band directors. It was a, the time went so quick, we finally had to say, you know, two hours, and, you know, let's, let's get know, let's get back together. So more on that to come. And also, as a side note, we're working on something with someone. It's not done yet, but we're working on a fundraiser that won't be under the Great American Brass Band umbrella, but it'll be under a band that's got a little bit of brass in it, so, working with someone right now. And as a matter of fact, she's meeting at 12 o'clock with the place where the event would be held, so. But both marching bands, and in addition to that, I will say, you know, my goal is to reach out to the folks at Lincoln County, Garrett County, Bergen, surrounding schools, because, you know, we're just not bringing people that live here in Danville and Boyle County. We've coming in from all over. And, you know, one of the things that I talked to our current arts director for Danville City Schools, correct me if I'm wrong, Jane Dewey, did I get her name right? She and I talked, gosh, the first call should have been five minutes, it was about 45 minutes. How do we, how do we get music started earlier in the school system? So, anyway, but thank you for that, and you're absolutely right.
Plug your festival, sir.
Thank you.
What's the date?
Oh, this year, it's the sixth through the ninth. So the sixth on Thursday, you know, the events start the seventh, you know, is the Friday with Bayou and Brass. The eighth, you know, we move to the courthouse and down to the lawn, and then the ninth, we conclude on Sunday afternoon. Any other questions? Well, again, thank you all so much for having me, and we hoped to see you before, but we certainly hope to see you at this year's festival. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
I hate to have to take in too much.
I hate to have to take in too much.
Sorry about that.
Don't, you got.
I know, I know.
Seven minutes.
I know, and I've been trying to figure out what the best approach is.
No pressure, but you're standing between us and lunch.
I know.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
No, I know.
You take your time. We've eaten enough to choke a horse back here, so we're fine.
Well, one, I have to say that, you know, for years, the city of Danville has helped us sustain the mission of Wilderness Trace Child Development Center, and we are the only nonprofit preschool dedicated to serving children with special needs in the state of Kentucky that focuses and emphasizes children that have developmental delays, who are medically fragile, and really need that small classroom with therapeutic services. And I think it's amazing that we're located in this community, but we struggle every year to sustain this mission that really began with parents gathering together for some social opportunities, and now has grown to be the only provider for children with special needs from the ages of two through five. And the fact that we're doing this 10 months a year, we do breakfast, lunch, snacks, art activities, an emphasis on music and play, but therapy is what drives change. And over the last two years, the center has recognized that we're serving more children who are very involved, and that can stem from addictions to opioids at birth. Substance abuse has impacted children who are born with a disadvantage. They really have different sensory issues, behavior becomes a challenge for them, but also the physical deficits that are created by addictions. And we are serving more of those children, and it's becoming more and more challenging to secure funding for the center's model. And I do want to brag on our board and staff, we try so hard to be really independent with fundraising efforts. We sell knickknacks all year long and furniture at Bluebird Market. That has helped us keep the center going. We have two fundraising events, we're getting ready for Big Toy Day, April 13th, and I'm really excited about that. But I just need to ask every opportunity I can for financial support of these kids, and it's hard to ask for money, and you guys are incredibly generous to support our mission. But I feel like I would have been, I think, not serving my population well if I hadn't asked for an increase that is congruent with the needs of the center, if that makes sense. So, it's hard, it's so hard, but we are committed. We don't want to have the center dissolve. I think it's too vital to our communities and our families. Something that we started last year also has been therapies for children who aren't being able to be served because there's like a huge waiting list that kids can do. And that has really been dramatic for us as well, in that it's another tough service to sustain, but the need is there. And, you know, we just took, had two middle-school age boys come in for outpatient who have stutter, stuttering is an issue, and it's causing a lot of bullying, it's causing confidence issues, self-esteem, and, you know, it's really our pleasure to be able to provide the skill set that a young child needs to overcome any kind of developmental delay or speech deficiency, and actually also be able to nourish their bodies. We're still doing a lot of feeding therapies at the center. And it's Down Syndrome Awareness Day, and it's very fitting that we get the opportunity to talk about our mission today, but I'm sure you all have questions, and I would love to know if there's anything in particular that you noticed that maybe the center can do differently, or your thoughts about what the center means to our community as well.
How many on staff?
We have currently 16 staff members, and we, if I had all the resources, we would have a few more people with specialties for like behavior management, but people and therapists are what drive the change to give these children the best opportunity they can to succeed, not only in school, but also in life. We want them to be productive, we want them to be included, so that's really very important for us.
Do you have a breakout demographically of the students you serve? How many from Danville? How many from the county? How many from surrounding counties, surrounding communities?
Definitely children in the Danville School District, that number is the highest that we serve, followed by Boyle County and then Lincoln County, sorry about that. And then we have a child from Casey County, Pulaski County, and Mercer, we have two from Mercer Counties.
Are you at capacity?
We are, yes, and we have a waiting list again this year, which is very, you know, our greatest need is more space, and that's going to be impossible for us, I think. Our community sustains so many amazing efforts, and it's tough to figure out. I've been writing grants and looking at grants for expansion. I'm currently serving on an alliance in the community to look at spaces available where we could do more collaboration, so that there are more wraparound services for all children at preschool age. But we need more space, and we hate to not be able to serve every child that needs to be at the center. But we're doing our best. Good question.
What's your age cutoff? Like how, what's the oldest?
For preschool, the oldest is five or six, and six for sometimes means for children who are medically fragile, or perhaps like in a wheelchair situation, that they need that one more year with intense therapy. And then our outpatient, we had said we would stop at the age of eight, but we have made accommodations for some, for some older children too. So we're looking, right now, it's about up to 14 for outpatient therapies.
Is Bluebird, is it doing better, or the same, or how, what's the trend there?
That's such a good question. I would have to say that it's still strong for what the market is. You know, we can't control our inventory.
Right, right.
But you guys, you know, this community is incredibly blessed with generous people, and the fact that they donate consistently to the market, and lovely people come there and shop to support the center. We really would not be able to sustain the center without the market. I'd always hoped it would be icing on the cake, and it's just turned out to be the cake. So, I'm like, we can't do it without the market, so, but that's a good question.
On your annual income side, and maybe I've just missed this a long time ago, you get nothing from insurance or Medicare or any of that kind of activity?
Correct. I'm working on that for, for example, children that are at the center based on a school contract. You know, schools can bill Medicaid for therapies. We have not been able to do that because we have been considered, you know, a private nonprofit. We did apply for our Medicaid number and receive that, so we are able to implement for outpatient therapies some Medicaid billing. And we just met with Danville Schools and had a training that we are hoping next year that we can implement billing through Easy Ed Med for some of the therapies that our children receive. And that will hopefully be just like another revenue stream. The center just doesn't really have a way to control kind of our own finances, except for tuition for people that can privately pay in our school contracts, but money from the state has decreased about $1,000, a little over $1,000 per child. So the last two years, we've had about a $120,000 gap to try to make up, and that was money that we could just depend on. And I know it's not your burden to carry for the state, but I want to keep the center in business. I think it's just so vital for these little vulnerable people. But we are trying to look at ways that we can be, you know, overturning every rock. So if we could implement school-based billing and work that out, that would help sustain therapy services and personnel costs, because that's, that's the critical part of our budget. Such a good question. And we got a call yesterday from the Knights of Columbus, and they're going to be selling Tootsie Rolls soon at Kroger, and I was like, it's so amazing how people raise money. And he goes, "We'd really like to come meet you, because you are part of what our missions stand for." And I was like, "Tootsie Rolls, knickknacks, couches, you know, bring it on," so.
And I know that you're not the type of person that would turn people away, and certainly you've expressed where some of your clients are coming from, or folks you're working with, which is heavily in Danville and Boyle County, which we certainly appreciate, but as far as way is Pulaski County. And so some of the governments that are funding you are more local. I'm going to guess you're just saying, "We're glad you're here, we're going to try to help you," but have you ever considered putting a charge on those folks coming out of the giveaway?
Yeah, and that is such, and let me clarify that too. So for the family that drives from Pulaski County, they do private pay, since the school would not contract with us. That's a really good question. And we have received funding from Lincoln County, Boyle Fiscal Court, Mercer County, and the city of Harrodsburg as well. So you are not the only ones that we pester and just try to collaborate with. We're very focused on that regional aspect, because we're serving their children as well. And the little guy from Casey County is part of the Amish community, and it's very unlike the Amish to seek any kind of services outside of their own community. And they have been repaying us with treats and bread, and they come about, his family comes every month to visit, and it's a really big deal for them, because they do not seek outside resources, so it's really sweet.
Maybe the Amish could be a source of expansion of your building, then.
I know, that's what I was thinking too. We need our driveway repaved, it's just a mess, so. I'm always thinking, that's a good one, I know. They could be fast too, I'd imagine, so.
Well, we can never say thanks enough for what you're doing.
It's such a sweet place, isn't it?
Yeah, it only takes to have a connection with one of your students, your children, that really will impact all of us, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, thanks. We're trying, trying all the time, so, thank you guys so much, and I'm sorry to ask for more, and I know that we may not receive that. I just, I had to ask, so.
We understand that.
Okay, thank you.
That, let's see, do we have one more? So that concludes, that concludes this portion of agency presentations. When do you want these score sheets back, yeah?
It would be nice to have them early next week, if we could, say Wednesday of next week. Today, if you're ready, if you need to look at it and think about it some more, if we could get them in by Wednesday of next week, that would be helpful.
Do we need a motion to adjourn, sir? Or just?
Unless, I think, unless there's any other thing else on this subject, if not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we'll make that motion.
Motion made, do we hear a second?
Second.
On favorite motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.